Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 26, 2021 Glendale City Council Meeting. Due to evolving situation with COVID-19 and health recommendations from LA County Health Department, the Glendale City Council Meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. This meeting can be viewed on local cable spectrum and Charter Cable Channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, www.glandalcia.gov, by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting "Live Streaming", which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100, which is on the screen. Please do not call in advance of the agenda item. With this being said, may I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Brotman?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Agajanian?
Present. Okay, now, what's next?
Next would be flag salute.
Okay, I will lead the flags. Please join me in the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Tonight, it is our prayer that we may be worthy of the blessings provided to us. We ask for prosperity and peace in our community as well as our nation. Guide our council as they consider the matters before them and guide them in their decisions for the good of Glendale. Amen.
Thank you. Next item, please.
The agenda for the January 26, 2021 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on January 19, 2021, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Ajamin. What's next, please?
Next would be presentation and appointments. A agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, February 2, 2021.
Mr. Takdali?
Good evening, Mayor Agajanian, members of the City Council. Next Tuesday evening, we don't have a Glendale Housing Authority Agenda meeting. However, we do have a joint City Council Housing Authority meeting with two items on the agenda. I'm sorry, just one item on the agenda. That's going to be a report from Community Development regarding authorization to enter into servicing agreement between the City of Glendale and Glendale Community College. That'll be for the use of $1.3 million in Measure S funds to implement and administer the low-income student rental assistance program. That evening during City Council, we only have two items. Under consent, the first will be a report from Public Works Department regarding award of contract for the Duke-Majin Park Restrooms and Interpretive Center project, followed by a report from Community Services and Parks regarding the award of the 2021 Federal Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act funds to the Glendale Youth Alliance and the City of Burbank, as it was approved and recommended by the Verdugo Workforce Development Board. That concludes the preview for next week.
Thank you. What's next, please?
Next item is appointment of boards and commission member by Mayor Agajanian on January 19, 2021, Eileen Laura Hanjian for Sustainability Commission.
Thank you. Okay, Eileen is an attorney, and she works as a private attorney in the City of Glendale. And she's, the biography, very briefly, she's graduated in 2001 with BA in Political Science, and then she attended law school, graduated in 2004 with JD degree, and passed the bar in the same time. And since then, she's working as attorney. And right now, she lives and works in Glendale. Thank you. Now, what's?
Mayor?
Yes, please.
If I may, I have a nomination.
Yes, please. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Well, this concerns you as well, because the mayor and I have interviewed several candidates for our Housing Authority tenant commissioner position. So as Chair of the Housing Authority, I'd like to nominate Robert Ajinian. He is a US Vet. He resides in our Veterans Village, and he serves on their board for their residents. He has a degree in social behavior from LA City College, and he is studying to be a paralegal. So I look forward to next week when we can approve his nomination. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, do you vote on Ms. Hanjian at this point, or is that for next week?
Hanjian, I think it's?
It's this week.
This week?
It's this week.
Today?
Oh, yes.
We haven't taken a roll call.
Don't be so rude.
So roll call. Can we do a roll call? And I will do a roll call on Mr. Hanjian. Is there anybody?
So I'll move Ms. Hanjian's appointment.
And I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. What's next? Yes.
I apologize for the interruption, but, Mr. Mayor, I would also like to thank all the applicants. There were quite a few, and there were some very good ones. So I just want to encourage those that were not selected to please not forget about this. And if the opportunity comes up again, then hopefully they will resubmit their applications. Thank you.
And I want to add that we had to pick up just one person. So obviously, that doesn't mean others are not worthy of being a commissioner. They were qualified people. Most of them, they were qualified. But we have to just pick up one person, so that's why it's like lottery. You know, I don't know, 100 million tickets, hundreds of millions of tickets sold, and one person just won. So anyway, Ms... Yes, Mr. Golani? Oh, Ms. Hanjian is... Yes, okay, Ms. Hanjian, you want to say a few words?
Certainly. I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to assist the City Council to navigate the intricacies of the renewable sector. It is my honor and privilege to serve you, and I'm hoping that the City of Glendale will be at the forefront of statewide efforts to become self-sustaining.
Thank you, Ms. Hanjian. Okay, what's next?
Congratulations.
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 Thank you.
Congratulations. And what's next, please?
Next would be consent items. Following our routine, and may be acted upon by one motion, any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Okay.
I'll move the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second also.
I was trying for a second, but I was on mute. But that's fine.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine? Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. What's next, please?
Next would be City Council and staff comments.
Okay, before I go to my colleagues, it's with great sadness that I'm announcing the passing away of Mr. Armon Gregorian. You're seeing the picture here. On behalf of my colleagues, myself, and city staff, our deepest condolences to his family. And I will... I have to adjourn tonight's meeting in his memory, which I will read at that time, his biography. Okay, and is there any other comment from my colleagues? Ms. Devine?
I just have a couple of brief ones. I am, first of all, I'm absolutely heartbroken at the passing of Armon Gregorian. I mean, that is just the saddest news. He was such a great, great man, so devoted to hominid men. And you know, he was among the group that invited me to go to Armenia with them. And he was there on the trip, and we had such a wonderful time. And he is, he's just, he was just the best, and I'm so sad about that. But I'll move on. I have one announcement, and this is for the Museum of Neon Art. On January 29, at 6:30, they are going to have a one-hour-long Zoom presentation by Corey Siegel and Arlene Bedore, and it's entitled "Glendale Illuminated". And it's going to track the history of Glendale through its signage using archival photographs, current date images, and film clips. The development of neon as technology and as an art form from the early 1900s through the present mirror the growth of Glendale. It should be very... If any of you have ever heard Arlene Bedore speak, she is always interesting and informative. So if you'd like to attend, please visit their website. It's neonmona.org for event tickets and information. That's January 29 at 6:30. And my second item is a request from staff. And if Mr. Bolanikian is here tonight, and I'd like to request a report on our senior task force. I know some of our new council members may not be aware of the format... Well, they probably know it exists, but who is on it? Who is represented? What the task force does? And where they are today in their mission? So I would like to request, I guess if I get a second, a staff report.
I'll second.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Brotman?
I have a couple items. So firstly, I think it was two weeks ago, council gave staff instruction to develop an ordinance for banning single-use plastics and polystyrene in our municipal operations and city facilities, et cetera. At the time, I mentioned that the Board of Supervisors was considering an ordinance that would require food delivery apps to only provide utensils, single-use utensils, on request. Since then, the item has come to the Board of Supervisors. In fact, I think it came today, and I don't know whether they passed it or not. It's called "Skip the Stuff", and I thought I had asked for it in our discussion two weeks ago, but apparently it was not included in the motion. So I would like to ask today if we could prepare an ordinance that would mirror what the county is doing. And I'm making the assumption that it was approved today by the Board of Supervisors. I don't know that, in fact, but we can check that. And I think it should be relatively straightforward. It'll be business savings to restaurants, since they won't have to provide utensils. And we can just pick up, hopefully, the language that the county attorney developed. So I'm not sure. I think we may need to agendize this and have a discussion. If so, I would request a second from one of my colleagues.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. And I know, Councilmember Devine, you probably a year or two ago now asked for something regarding plastic utensils. So it takes time, but we're moving. So that was one. The other thing was, you know, I wanted to talk again about COVID enforcement. You know, many of us bring this up repeatedly. And yet, you know, in the community, there's still a strong sense that we're not doing enough. And I agree with that. I had asked, you know, us to look into using volunteers. I mentioned in Pasadena, there was an attempt to do that. And our city manager, Mr. Golani, sent us all a message about how much of a failure that turned out to be in Pasadena. And I guess they pulled the plug on that very quickly. So I understand that that's probably not the way to approach it. But I understand there were a couple ideas that are being floated. One for something called a digital ambassadors program, and another for a cellphone citation app, I guess that would allow our officers, law enforcement officers, when they do talk to somebody who's not wearing a mask, and even if they're not planning on giving a citation, they can then take their identification details. And I think that'll have an impact on people, because they will know now that they've been identified, and if they are found again to be without a mask, they will be cited. And I understand that Mr. Golani and Chief Povolitis have looked into that and have some plans, I think, in the short term, to do something temporary with cell phones, taking pictures. And then, once they can get this app in place, they will use that. So I was hoping that we could hear a little bit more about that and consider any other options. Is there some kind of a search we can do? Something to get the message across that we are deadly serious about this? And this is, you know, we're seeing good news, right? We're seeing the spikes in infection rates start to taper. We know vaccines are coming down the pike, but this is still going to be a long road, and we need to all step it up with compliance. So maybe if the city manager, interim city manager or police chief want to say something about that, I think it would be helpful to everyone. And just before I yield on this, also, if somebody on staff could just remind the public about how to go about getting a vaccination if you're over 65. I know we've put it out on social media and elsewhere, but I think it would be good here just to remind everybody what the process is for that. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other... Mr. Kasakian?
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to also extend my condolences to the Gregorian family, to all of Armon's friends and loved ones. He truly was the paragon of community service and just generally an endless fountain of kindness. I mean, you know, we all may have our differences. Everyone in this community may, you know, at various times, not get along with another person in the community, but Armon got along with everyone all the time. And he was about Arad, Homatmen, the Scouts, the youth, and he was about Glendale. I mean, you know, if we had more time, had we not been blindsided by this tragic news, I'm sure our staff would dig up countless videos of him coming and bringing his teams, his triumphant teams from Glendale to these chambers, and always being kind of in the background, shying away from the spotlight, and always making sure that the youth were the ones that were getting the credit. It's a very, very big loss. Now, trying to shift gears, and I'd like to bring up a few things that, when staff has time, and I know that we often are inundating... It feels like we're inundating them with tasks, but hopefully, these ones will be relatively simple. One of them, one of the things I'd like to request, if my colleagues would support this, is a report just in general about the health of our trees and our parkways. I know that we just dealt with parkways, and I don't want to give anyone on staff PTSD, but specifically about trees, I see oftentimes a lot of tree wells that are empty. A tree hasn't been replaced. And when a tree is replaced, who is in charge of the care of that? In some cities, the city is in charge of at least getting the tree to a place where it's healthy enough, where it can then be sustained by the natural course of climate and rainfall in the area. But I'd like to know, you know, just a general arborist report on trees in our parkways and their health. And I know a few years back, we talked about replacing some species, et cetera. So I'd like that. And I'd also like to request, if my colleagues, if anyone would second that first item, I'd appreciate it. If there's anyone?
Yes, also you are.
And Dan. And then, for the second item, you know, I was very excited about the proposal that my colleagues brought forward about the safer and slower streets, the measures we took to allow people to use the streets for more pedestrian use during COVID. But I also am concerned about what may happen in certain areas when we resume our regular course of activities, and specifically on Ethel and Glen Oaks has been brought to my attention that the people along that stretch are very happy with how things are, but they're worried about what will happen when the college is back in session and there's more regular traffic on the roads. And I'd like us to study ways or have a report brought back as to how we can divert the traffic onto the main thoroughfares from those very, very heavily overused residential streets. The intention of Ethel and Glen Oaks was never for it to be a major pass-through. So if someone would second that, I'd appreciate that as well.
Yeah, I'll second that. And if I could just make a quick comment on that, because I actually just walked that area the other day, because I had heard similar comments, and noticed that the speed humps that we have along Ethel, at least, are just so flat, they really seem to serve no purpose. So maybe part of it is looking at whether we can put something in there more like what we have, I think, in front of Ardy White, which is a much more, you know, significant deterrent to speeding. So, sorry, I didn't mean to jump on your story already.
No, no, that's...
I wanted to add that.
Completely fine, and I appreciate it. And I think Councilmember Najarian I saw was trying to get in, or Councilmember Devine as well. I really appreciate everyone's support of this, because I think now is the time when people are accustomed to certain behavior to kind of make sure that there's some permanency to that and encourage people to use alternate routes, including myself, guilty as charged. I've taken Ethel and Glen Oaks in the past, and we really should take it easy on those more residential neighborhoods. And lastly, I want to thank staff. I've been informed that a large amount of the trash and bulky items were picked up from the area that I brought up last week. Thank you for that prompt response. And I want to just let the public know that if you call, if you leave messages, if you sign up for the bulky item pickup, our staff is out there cleaning up the city, trying to keep up with the load. So thank you so much to staff. Thank you, Mr. Golani and Mr. Imran, and whoever went out there to pick up and clean it up. That is all.
Mr. Najarian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to let everyone know that yesterday, by a vote of the Los Angeles County City Selection Committee, I was re-elected to the Metro Link... Excuse me, the Metro Board, LA Metro, and I will be one of four members serving the 88 independent cities in Los Angeles County. So it's a four-year term, and I look forward to really getting some funding for good transportation projects, transit, active transportation, bicycling, and alternative transportation usages in Glendale and our surrounding areas. The second item is I've received some emails from residents, and apparently, from what I've seen, I have reason to suspect that one of our Design Review Board members, commissioners, has been drinking alcohol during at least one of the Design Review Board meetings, participating in the meeting. I request that we agendize this issue, asking for a report by the city attorney to see if such allegations are true and to determine and discuss as a board what actions, if any, we should take if such is found to be true. I'd like a second on that, if possible.
Mr. Mayor, can I speak on that?
Yeah, Mr. Brotman?
Yeah, I think, Mr. Najarian, you know what happened, because the person that was given a glass of diluted wine by her husband at the end of a long session at home during COVID has already written and acknowledged the error and promised never to do anything like that again. And I think, unless you think there's an endemic issue here, and I don't think there is, I think it's really a waste of the public's time for us to be scoring political points on something like this with somebody who I know makes some people uncomfortable, because she makes a very serious effort to ensure that we hold to the highest design standards. So, you know, we all make mistakes. I know that you were on social media, right? standards. So, you know, we all make mistakes. I know that you were on social media right after the George Floyd incident and used words like locked and loaded, or whatever they were. I don't remember.
No, Mr. Bratman, that's not what I said.
Excuse me, excuse Mr. Bratman, Mr. Bratman, Mr. Bratman.
Let me finish.
Mr. Bratman, one second, one second.
Actually, Mr. Bratman, if I, if I may.
Mr. Bratman, one second. City Attorney wants to speak up. I just add that Mr. Councilmember Najarian brought something. This is not the time to defend or go against. So, Mr. Garcia, City Attorney, Mr. Garcia.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to echo that comment. And Mr. Councilmember Najarian asked for an item to be brought, to be agendized. And so it either gets seconded or doesn't, and we move forward on that basis.
Okay, I will second it.
So, okay. We'll discuss it when the report comes in. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment? Okay, now.
Mr. Mayor?
And do we need to name the, the DRB member? I presume we do to agendize it. It shouldn't, it's not some anonymous person. It's Francesca Smith from the DRB. So I think that's required to agendize a discussion on that member.
Thank you, Mr. Kusak.
Mr. Mayor, I would generally, if there's going to be a discussion on that, and certainly, you know, we have followed the process to do that, I'd like to also couple that at some time. I don't know if that's the appropriate time to do it at the same time, but we generally need a, I believe, guidelines, code of conduct, not just for board and commissioners, but about council conduct as well, not, and nothing specific that has raised that, but in general, I think many cities have that. There's been discussion of it in the past, just to have clear delineated lines and people know what is acceptable, what is not. And to have that somehow codified or memorialized, I think would be appropriate as well. It will give our commissioners, our board members, and ourselves some clear direction as to what we can and cannot and should not do.
Thank you.
I would support that, but I wouldn't want that to be part of the, the discussion that we have on the first issue.
Thank you.
All right. Now, Mr. Galanian?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Agajonian. Member of City Council, just wanted to circle back to a question that Councilmember Bratman had raised before, earlier, regarding enforcement of face coverings and masks. I know there is a sense, some part of the community members that we are not doing enough. I have Chief Povolitis here who will provide some more detail, but just wanted to tee it off by saying, according to the last report I have gotten, our police department and our task force alone have spent more than 3,500 hours on education, issuing citations, as well as providing incentives for folks to comply with the health orders, including social distancing, as well as wearing of face masks. And Chief Povolitis will go through some statistics that we believe in our city, we have done, not that it may be enough, but we have done much more than other cities in the region that we know of. On the two other items that I had noted in my memo to council, Councilmember Bratman is correct. We are in the process of finalizing a system that will issue e-citations, electronic citations. We have experienced a couple of technical glitches that we are working through and hopefully can, can have them fixed and have these devices in the hands of our, our police officers and task force members, who will then be able to electronically take the information directly from people's IDs and then automatically populate into a system for retrieval if the violation happens again. We have also, one last thing, Mr. Mayor, on the digital ambassador effort, we will soon start a campaign. It's a texting campaign between folks who know each other, and we are hoping that this would spread through the community so that folks would know what the requirements are, what the health orders are, and just a way of encouragement for people to obey those orders. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Povolitis to provide some more details on the numbers and efforts as far as enforcement is concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Chief Povolitis, are we doing enough? That's the question.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Chief Povolitis Police Chief. I will tell you, we are one of the only police agencies that I know of in LA County that have stepped into the arena for part of COVID, social distancing, education, and actual enforcement. And I think that's a testament to our commitment as an organization that as a community, this is something that we have to address. And the police department has not the only role, but it has a role to play in that. Starting in August, we did start using a task force because while, while COVID is absolutely critical to the safety of our community, the rest of police work continues to, to go on. In fact, in 2020, the year that just ended, between officer-initiated observations and calls for service, there were 117,000 things that the police department still did on top of issues of dealing with a pandemic. So as I said, the task force was a way to be able to focus that. Interim City Manager Galanian is correct, we've spent over 3,500 hours in that process. During that, we've handled 589 calls for service. We've had contact with 8,281 groups of people. Again, we find most people are in compliance. We've issued 149 citations. And then, as I said, for those that are in compliance, we've issued 119 gift cards. We are in the process of finishing up just a, a couple of technical difficulties because police work is not a, a job that gets done at further than six feet. And writing citations also puts officers within six feet of people. We've been going down the process of transition to electronic citations for our traffic enforcement in together. This system does have the ability to track or incorporate a warning. We're in the process of adapting that, but we're also integrating that into a 20-plus-year-old computerator dispatch records management system that we're midstream of replacing as we speak, which the replacement will be here in July. But I anticipate having them into the field in the, in the coming week. I think we've just kind of cleared the hurdle on the last technical glitch and working out one more. So that's, that's where we are right now.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian, do you have anything to add?
No, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Devine. Ms. Devine, you are, you are unmuted.
Thank you. And Chief, I just want to, to let everyone know and to warn everyone that, you know, now that the governor has opened, let hair salons open and outdoor dining go on and, and et cetera, et cetera, that we should not let down our guard. We have to continue, continue to be, to be diligent at wearing our masks and washing our hands. And now they're even recommending wearing two masks. And I have to say that, and I think this speaks to the police department, that in my trips out of the house, since I've been in lockdown for so long, I see many more people wearing masks now than ever before. So I want to congratulate and give kudos to our residents that are wearing masks and that are trying to keep themselves safe and others safe as well. So thank you, Chief, for everything that the police department's doing. I would like to mention one thing, and that is that would it be possible that once, and this may not be for Chief Povolitis, but once we are able to, we have the vaccines and we're able to give the vaccinations to those that are 65, 75 and above, some of them cannot make appointments. They don't have the wherewithal, the computers, and aren't able to. If perhaps staff, we can look into setting up stations, maybe at the community center or at the adult recreation center, where seniors can go to make appointments or have someone there who will help them to make an appointment for their vaccine. And I'm sorry to bring that up now, but I, I just find that while we're talking about COVID, this might be a good time.
I would second Councilmember Devine's suggestion. That's a very good one. Thank you.
Okay. I hope staff has taken note. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Galanian, City Manager, Mr. Galan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor of City Council. Just wanted to invite Chief Lanzas to provide an update on the vaccination rollout and, and the latest status that he's been informed of. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Lanzas, Fire Chief Lanzas.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Agajonian, members of council. Yeah, I'd like to share a couple of thoughts and a couple of comments regarding the vaccination, the mass vaccination locations that are essentially the only ones that are available today. And as I, as I mentioned last week, we, we continue to plead for your patience because the vaccine is just simply not available. It is not coming to the state and therefore not coming down to the counties. As a figure comparatively, this week, LA County received 130,000 vaccine doses. 85,000 of those were for second dose individuals. So that left a very, very small amount of dose, dosage available for the people in the tier. So I'd like to cover quickly which people are available today to receive the vaccine. They continue to be EMS and healthcare workers, residents and staff at skilled nursing facilities and convalescent homes, and residents 65 and older. I went on today to try to see if there was any locations that had appointments available and there were none. All of the vaccine allocation, as you can imagine, the numbers that I just gave is a very small number. Just in LA County, 65 and older, there's 1.4 million people, 65 and older in our county. So we need vaccine and we need, we need it to be plentiful so we could continue to, to, to roll out. The six locations, I think Councilmember Kasakian had requested to talk to our, our viewers about how they could get vaccinated. Currently, the, the route to become, to, to schedule an appointment is to go to www.vaccinate.lacounty.com. Through that website, you can schedule a vaccine appointment at one of the six mass locations, and those locations are the Pomona Fairplex, California State Northridge, the Forum in Inglewood, Six Flags Magic Mountain, and LA County Office of Education, the Downey Education Center, as well as Dodger Stadium. Those are the six locations you can receive vaccination. What I would encourage residents to do is keep checking. A cancellation occurs, more vaccine becomes available, appointments open. There is also efforts underway to, as I mentioned previously, to partner with 75 pharmacies to provide vaccination. But again, the challenge is availability of vaccine. So those are the comments regarding vaccination and availability of vaccine, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Is there any question from Chief Lanzas?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Kusak.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, everyone in the city who's working on this and keeping our community healthy and safe. I know that Pasadena has been petitioning or pushing to make the Rose Bowl site a mass vaccination site. If there's a coordination or an opportunity to coordinate efforts, I would like to ask my colleagues to join in on that to help make the Rose Bowl parking area or stadium available for mass vaccination, which I think would benefit Glendale as well. If we can officially lend our support, whether it's through giving direction to the city manager to do it on our behalf or to the, to Chief Lanzas, I'd, I'd like to ask for that.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Kasakian, thank you for those comments. I was last week on a conference call, a Zoom call with the Pasadena Public Health Director, their city manager, their interim fire chief about that very subject. They were, LA County was also on that call, and the subject was pertaining to opening the Rose Bowl as a mass vaccination site. The, the challenge was that Pasadena, differently than us, gets their vaccine straight from the state. Because they have their own health department, they are allocated vaccines straight from the state, not from the county. So the challenge that they posed on the call, and it's not one that can't be overcome, is that there would need to be county vaccine that was supported, that would be supported at that site, so their residents don't get shorted the Pasadena vaccine, if that makes sense. So it's not something that's, that's, as I mentioned, insurmountable. It's certainly something that can be worked out. It just goes back to my first comment, which is the availability of vaccine. I, I think if we had vaccine at county, if the Department of Public Health had vaccine, we would be opening sites all over the place. As you know, we have plans here in Glendale and have been approved and have signed agreements with the county to open a site at our civic, civic auditorium. So we're ready to do that as soon as vaccine becomes available. And I think the suggestion from Councilmember Devine to have walk-up, if you will, availability and not have to do it online or via phone for those that are not technically savvy is a great one. And I think we will certainly incorporate that into the future.
Thank you. Is there any other comment? Okay, I just want to add, I was reporting last night, there is 41 million doses of vaccine. There are 22.4, 20.4 million has been used and vaccinated, the public, and only 3.2 million, they vaccinated twice. I mean, they have both doses of vaccine. Okay. All right. Now, I guess we are done with this portion. Now we go to community events and announcements.
Correct, Mayor. Community event announcements. I do have one caller on the line.
Okay, one second. So those who, I will invite everybody to call, and I will take calls, but please limit yourself to three minutes to share with your comments or ideas. Thank you. First caller, please. Jean Behrendt, Jean?
Yes, thank you for listening to me. You might have, I did send an email to the council members, but I am re-generating with a phone call because it is such a crucial issue for me. I live at 30, well, the house above me at 3830 Hillway Drive is doing a remodel and has already started, but with the start, they are, they violated the permit they have. They drain their water onto my property, the water, the runoff from their driveway and the house. So that's hard, that water should not, should be going to the street, not over my hill. And they have a collection base, but in, if the storm is, if the rainfall is heavy, it reaches it and comes cascading down the hill, bringing mud and goes over my wall. And they're in total violation of the ordinance that says their water should go to the street. And I'm extremely concerned because the runoff is going to be so much greater with this new construction. The house is going to be over 5,000 square feet, which is huge for our neighborhood, and it will continue to be runoff from the driveway. So I, they've already violated a permit they had. And I just would hope that it would be addressed. I don't know who's liable for the damage to my property when this water comes gushing down my hillside, but it needs to be addressed. When I tried to contact that person, he said through my neighbor, through another neighbor, but he said she needs to contact the city. So he was not interested in mitigating any of the problems. I did send a video to the council members, if you want to see what the water looks like reaching my wall. It has already filled in what used to be an open space behind my wall. So anyhow, I would appreciate that the letter of, or the law is followed here. He is not supposed to drain water in, onto another property. So thank you. I don't know if you need any other information from me.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Mayor, that was the last caller.
Okay, thank you. So about the issue which has been raised, the caller raised, is there anybody can contact her and see what the issue is?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mayor of City Council, Mr. Lanza, Fame of Community Development Director, has been on top of this issue. He actually, a few minutes ago, maybe 10, 20 minutes ago, sent a, a note to council as to his findings, and they will follow up with this caller.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, before we move on to the next item, I just did receive another phone call.
Let's go to the caller, please.
Les Vincent, you're live. Les, go ahead. Les, go ahead.
Okay.
Yes.
I can speak now?
Yes, Mr. Vincent. Mr. Vincent, we are listening.
Okay, yeah, I'm calling in regard to the variation on the permit for 3830 Hillway Drive. That was regards to the person that just spoke about that same property draining into their driveway. That house permit is actually in violation of the original permit, and we have a design review, and it's in violation of the design review. And I'd like to understand, as a resident, how do people get to build outside of their permit process when they're obviously violating the design review? It seems like that should be remediated rather than just waived and allowed to continue to build.
I mean, are you asking the question, or?
Well, I would, am actually just objecting to the point that the property building is being waived, and they're allowing continuation of building on that property after they've already violated the design review. It seems like our design review process isn't really working.
But I would.
I'd like the council to address, you know, what is the purpose of the design review if we're allowing violations without corrections?
Okay, this is not the place to answer. You may call the city, and you, they will talk about it, but we are not in position to answer your question at this time.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, Ms. Devine, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vincent.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Lanza Faim, is this coming to council on appeal, or is it already in the works?
Well, I know that one of my neighbors is working on trying to appeal this, and there is a design review that was postponed that I was going to participate on.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent, thank you very much. The question was to Mr. Lanza Faim, our chief on this matter, which he will answer the question.
The question is, is it on appeal to the city council? No, it is not. The caller is correct, the callers are correct, that the original scope of work was exceeded. Independent of that, there is a proposal to build a house that was scheduled for a design review. Once we learned that there were these issues and that the new house was going to be using the overbuilt deck, we pulled that from the design review calendar, and it will not go back on until all of those issues are resolved. I'll keep the council updated as we learn more with details. I did send you a note with some general information about it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Next, next item, please.
Mayor, the next item is action items, which would be A Day Finance Regarding Financial Status Report, November 30th, 2020. One, motion to note and file the financial status report for the period ending November 30th, 2020.
Thank you. Mr. Golanyan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Agajanian, members of city council. As promised, staff is presenting this item tonight to you. We had promised that do this on a regular basis. The last time we presented the similar report was back in December, December 15th. This report covers revenues and expenses as well as the balance of Measure S funds up to November 30th of last year. The good news is that we are tracking, based on the numbers we've seen, we are tracking the projections that we had presented to council. The unknown is, though, we don't know as of yet what the impacts of the latest stay-at-home orders that were issued by the governor last year, last November, December, what impacts they would have on our sales tax. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Michelle Flynn, our Director of Finance, to provide that report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Golanyan, Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Golanyan, Mr. Mayor, members of council, good evening. I'm going to pull the PowerPoint up, and we can talk through the slides. So as Mr. Golanyan mentioned, this is the financial status report as of November 30th of 2020. So it's five months of actuals that we have recorded so far. And as usual, we'll be providing you with the general fund update for resources appropriations and our projected fund balance, as well as an update on Measure S funds, which is our local sales tax measure. Regarding our revenues as of November 30th, we've received a little over $50 million, or about 22.6% of our total revised budget. And as we've talked about before, the first large installment for our property tax payment does not come in until December, so the numbers here don't represent that initial, that first large installment. Sales tax is continuing to track as much as we can see at this point, close to projections, so there's really nothing new to report there. Our transient occupancy tax, if you remember back from our meeting in December, we did an adjustment where we lowered the projection for the year by about $4 million. So our actuals at this point are still averaging slightly less than that revised projection, so we're keeping a close eye on that, on that item in particular, especially with the more recent stay-at-home orders. Our landfill host assessment is included in the other taxes category. That does only reflect one quarter's worth of receipts thus far. The next quarter should be coming in soon. And charges for services category is tracking lower than prior year at this time. We did anticipate this, especially for the first quarter because of the COVID impacts on the different facilities for the city programs that we offer, as well as filming permits and those types of things. And as you know, our transfers category, we don't book that large transfer from Glendale Water and Power until the end of the year, so you'll see that as lower. So when you look at Slide four, those are the actual numbers in the third column over that we have booked for November 30th. And at the, towards the bottom, there is the 50.6 million, or 22% of our revised budget. Looking at our expenditures on the other side of the equation, this chart just pretty much provides you with a summary of how we get to our revised number. The expenditures that we have recorded through November 30th are a little over 91 million, or about 38%, 38.7% of our total revised budget, which all departments are tracking lower than what we would expect at five months right now if we were to straight-line it across the entire year. The revised budget does include our budget carryovers from a previous fiscal year, as well as the reductions that the departments took that we booked as of the first quarter, the first quarter report that we brought to you last time in December, as well as some minor adjustments to the budget. So our total revised budget for the year currently is a little over 237, or almost $238 million. And then you can see the breakdown by major categories on Slide six. That gives you that same total towards the bottom, the revised budget, and then our actuals is in that third column over, a little over 91 million. And then, as you can see in the various categories, as we've talked about before, we do expect our hourly wages to be lower because of our different closures in our facilities and programs and our contractual services and supplies as well. And then, as far as our general fund summary, this chart pulls it all together for you. Top part of the slide provides you our revenues, the revisions, as well as what our total is for the year. The lower part is the appropriations, and then you'll see at the very bottom, the 4.6 million net use of fund balance, that we have not changed that projection since last And bringing this all together for our fund balance, the numbers do reflect the same numbers we reported to council in December, where we will, we are, where we are currently projecting year, ending the year with 32% reserve, which is within the policy threshold that council has set for the general fund reserve. And I can pause here real quick if there's any questions on this portion before we jump into Measure S.
Is there any question from Ms. Flynn?
I have a question.
Mr. Najarian, Councilmember Najarian.
Thank you, Michelle. So on our expenditure side, you noted that we're experiencing about 1.6 million in savings, partly due to budget reductions by certain departments.
Correct.
Do we expect those reductions to continue, or were those just one-time reductions?
That's a good question, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Najarian. So what we're doing right now is we're getting ready for next budget season. So those are the things that we're going to be looking at with all the departments, and in some cases, they can be one-time, and in other cases, they may not be. So we'll have to see how those, each of those items are and what the departments are going to need. But as you know, and I've always said this, we bring to council our best budget possible, as balanced as possible. So we'll be looking at each of those items to see if we need to add those back into department budgets or not, and they'll be weighing those against their other priorities.
So clearly, as our income is still uncertain, although holding steady, the continuation of those budget reductions and very lean budgets presented in the process would be greatly appreciated by the council.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Flynn, please continue.
Sure. Okay, so we'll move on to Measure S on Slide 10. This gives you a recap of our projected revenues for the year at the very top line there, which is the sales tax numbers that come in, the actuals in that far right column of a little over 8.2 million, and then all the programs that the council has approved for funding from Measure S funds. And I do want to point out, just for the sake of council, so that you know, looking at your staff report as well as the public, if anyone is looking at the staff report, the three items under housing, the last three items, all the low-income ones, they start with low income. We mistakenly got the numbers out of order in our staff report, but this slide represents the actual numbers. So the low-income housing incentive program is 250,000, and the staff report is incorrect. It says a little over 1.3 million, and the others as well. So please refer to this slide when you're looking at those numbers for those programs. So in total, the revised column there for the appropriations is 33.8 million. Actuals spent is a little over 1.6 million. And then our projected year-end fund balance, if all revenues and all appropriations happen for Measure S funds, we will end the year with a little over 2.6 left, or almost 2.6 million left for Measure S spending. And that concludes our presentation tonight. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Is there any question from Ms. Flynn? Okay.
Yeah, I have some. Yeah, first of all, thanks for this, as always, every month, these are really helpful for us. And I just want, you know, I just wanted to check, so our, you know, our expenses are running, five months in, we're at 38, 39% of our annual budget. And I think you said, we talked about this yesterday, that that's about par for the course, that's about on track with where we normally expect to be?
We don't normally do a five-month report, but if we were to straight-line it, it would be 42%, so we are tracking a little less than a straight line. So we're doing, we're doing okay.
Right, and then on the revenue side, we're at about 22.6%. And obviously, you never like to see your revenues coming in so much more slowly than your expenses are going out. But I just kind of wanted, and I, I understand, we've talked about this, I know the timing is, you know, difficult, right? And choppy, so we don't really ever expect, I guess, a straight line. But just from your experience, five months in, I know you don't do regular reports like this, but is your sense that this 22.6% is running, you know, at or near what we would typically see? Or are you kind of feeling that it's a little bit lower than we would normally want to be at this point in the year? Because this 22.6% is against the revised number, right, where we already dropped it down 4 million because of TOT?
Correct.
Right, so just getting, I just want to get a sense from you, just based on your, you know, your experience doing this year after year, how you feel about where we are right now, five months in?
I can, I can tell you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Brotman, that it really, it's really hard to say, as you said. However, when we looked at the first quarter numbers back in December, we were tracking very close percentage-wise to what we had in the past. So it is pretty much on target to where we think we should be at this point. We're going to be coming to council in a few weeks, at the beginning of March, with our mid-year report, which gives us our actuals through December. And that report is a little bit more solid as far as where we can see where we're at actually, and where we might be going for the end of the year. And we're going to be in the, in the process between now and then, really looking at categories like our transient occupancy tax, the charges for services, as well as our sales tax. And those are the key areas that we're concerned about, to see whether or not we're going to have to make any further adjustments, or if those projections are going to hold. And again, we are in uncharted territory as far as this pandemic and the effects on the economy, as well as what it's doing to our business, our businesses out there and the different sectors. It's changing our habits on how we shop and where, how we dine and everything. So it's, it's really hard for us to see that. So we're talking to people, we're looking at things, and we're trying to figure it out. We're going to be working closely with the departments, especially Parks and Rec, CDD, to see what they're looking at as far as what their facilities are going to be doing so that we can make any adjustments that we need to at the mid-year. We didn't want to bring adjustments just yet. We wanted to really wait till that six-month mark to see if there was anything more that we had to bring to you. So I'm sorry if that answers your question.
And I know that our, just finally, you know, our, we, I guess, came into the year, if I'm not mistaken, we came into the year with our reserves around 34%? Or was it closer to 30, maybe something like that?
It was 34.6, I think.
Almost 35%, correct?
Yeah, almost 35%. And I know we've, we've discussed this, and we've said, I think all of us have said, you know, we understand reserves are there for rainy days, it's a rainy day, and we've, we've kind of acknowledged that, you know, we're looking at ending the year around 32%, right? Because we're going to take about a $4.6 million loss during the year. So I think, you know, at 32%, I think we're all comfortable, and I think, just as you said, if it looks like we're going to dip below that, then I think I start to get, you know, uncomfortable, and I think we, we're going to need to look at how we offset those shortfalls. But hopefully, you know, hopefully it won't happen. But anyway, thanks again for this.
Sure.
Is there any other question from Ms. Flynn? Otherwise, anybody wants, what's this, what we do? This is just.
I'll move the item if there's no other questions. I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes, what's next, please?
Next would be Police Department regarding ordinance adding Chapter 9.19 to Glendale Municipal Code relating to the prohibited items while attending or participating in any public demonstration protest or public assembly. One ordinance for introduction.
Intrim City Manager, Mr. Golanyan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Agajanian, members of city council. I'm going to invite Captain William, Robert William, to present this report for your consideration.
Captain William, thank you for coming.
We can't hear the captain.
Is your microphone on?
Captain, can you pull it forward towards you?
But I think the microphone was not on even.
Is that on? Okay, sorry about that.
No problem.
As I said, I'm Captain Robert William, and I'm here tonight to propose an ordinance for introduction, and it's related to specific items or certain items being prohibited from being brought to demonstrations and public assemblies. Over the last several months, there has been an increase in violence during protests and public demonstrations in cities throughout the country. Individuals who are not interested in peaceful protests have used items such as bricks, rocks, bats, sticks, pepper spray, glass bottles, and there are several other items that are specified in the ordinance. And these items can easily be converted into improvised weapons and cause injury and damage. Events in which protesters and counter protesters use these improvised weapons to harm one another are becoming more common, and the increase in violence is becoming a matter of public safety. And the increase in violence is becoming a matter of public safety concern. The Glendale Police Department has been assessing our ability to manage large crowds and demonstrations. And as successful as we have been, you could never be too prepared for these events, especially when it concerns public safety. So we've been examining prior events here in our city and examining our response to these events. We've been looking at other jurisdictions and the response from their respective police departments and the tactics and the crowd management techniques that they've been using. And we've been trying to look at what other steps or measures we can take that would lessen the likelihood of a violent act and also to promote public safety. And what we learned is there are several other cities within our area that have similar ordinances. And I'll name some of those cities that I have a list here, but there are several others. The city of Burbank, Santa Monica, Beverly Hills, El Monte, Covina, Huntington Beach, the city of Los Angeles, the county of Los Angeles are just a few that are within our area or relatively close to our area that have an ordinance like this. But there are also several other cities as far south as Oceanside and all the way up north to Oakland, where they have similar ordinances like this. The city of Glendale, however, does not have any current restrictions. The ordinance that we are proposing that is before you tonight is modeled after the city of Los Angeles. And we believe it provides a clear and reasonable and objective regulations in terms of the prohibited items. We also believe that these, that this ordinance will make Glendale safer when it, when it comes to demonstrations and dealing with protests. And we believe it will be a peaceful environment for those who want to exercise their First Amendment rights peacefully. I'm happy to address any questions, but before I do, I want to emphasize to City Council and to our community that the Glendale Police Department has a long history of providing constitutional and respectful policing. As you all know, when it comes to demonstrations in our city, and we've had quite a few over the last several years, our police officers have been nothing but professional, respectful, and supportive in nature when it comes to these demonstrations. And, and this ordinance does not change that. Safety is our priority. And our goal with this ordinance is to continue to provide a safe environment for those who wish to exercise their First Amendment rights. Our intent with this ordinance is not to interfere with any demonstrations. We do not want to interject ourselves in crowds and use this ordinance to inspect people and inspect the items that they've brought with them. We want to use this ordinance more as a preventative measure. A lot of times when we're dealing with demonstrations as we're preparing for them, as we always do, we try to contact organizers who will often ask what they can bring, what they can't bring, and what, what their guidelines are. And so this is a really good way for us to provide some guidance as to what items are acceptable and what items are not. And we, we, in a practical sense, we, the way we see or envision ourselves using this, this ordinance is if we see people arriving at a demonstration prior to the event taking place and they have some of these items, we want to be able to give them the, the proper warning and be able to tell them, hey, you know, you might need to put that back in your car. This isn't something that's permissible. And as Chief Povolitis likes to use the analogy, think of it as going to a sporting event, a stadium, a concert, a fairground. There are some limitations on, in terms of what you can bring. So we see it that way as well with, with demonstrations. Again, I want to express to City Council and to our community that, that our goal in this is to provide safety for, for everyone involved. So with that, Chief Povolitis is available for questions. I'm here as well and more than happy to address any questions or concerns for City Council.
Is there any question from Captain William or Chief Povolitis?
Yeah.
Ms. Divine.
Oh, I, I just have one comment. And that is that, you know, I have the utmost respect for our police department. You're right, Captain Williams, you are always professional. And I know at the Black Lives Matter protest rally, you, you did a fantastic job. And in all the other protests we've had, the marches and the parades. And with this action, I think the bottom line is it's always better to be prepared or better be safe than sorry, as we learned on January the 6th. So I, I am, I am in, I will approve this, this ordinance. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Batman.
Yeah, I was going to just say, yeah, first, thanks, Captain William and, and the team for doing this. It makes sense to me. And I think you told me yesterday, I just want to make sure that the community knows there's really no daylight between what we're putting up and what LA has in place now. I think we went through all the items and virtually everything is, is identical in terms of what we're allowing and not allowing. Isn't that right?
That is, that is correct, Councilmember Brotman. We've looked at the city of Los Angeles. We know that courts have upheld their ordinance as constitutional. And we feel comfortable to, to mirror what their ordinance is.
Okay. And, and I also, I, I remember during the protest right after the George Floyd murder, now back, I can't even remember when that was. But I remember one incident that I mentioned at the time, but I think it's worth mentioning again. I was up in Montrose and a number of officers were huddling to talk about how they were going to approach the situation because, you know, streets were being blocked and obviously there were no permits involved. And it was, it was disrupting traffic. And, and what I heard in the conversation, I was just a fly on the wall. But it was just a very, it was very impressive in, in that there was a lot of respect for the, you know, maintaining safety. And the idea was, you know, yeah, they don't have a permit, but that's not the point. The point is, we want to make sure that they're safe. We want to make sure that they have an opportunity to speak. It's easy enough to route traffic around them, and that's what we're going to do. And we're going to make sure that nobody comes in from outside and tries to hijack the event and make it into something that it's not. So I thought it was very professional. You mentioned constitutional policing, and that's exactly what I saw. And, and I want to make sure people understand this is not about the Glendale Police Department coming into a crowd and grabbing people's signs because the stick is, is more than, you know, so many inches long. But that's not what's going to happen here. And anyway, I, I thank you and I support this.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian, Councilmember Najarian.
Thank you. Thank you, Captain and Chief. So I have a question with regard to the ordinance. It says, no person shall utilize, we know what that means, carry or possess the following items or articles while participating in any demonstration, rally, protest, picket line, or public assembly. So what if people are coming into town with these items in their vehicle? There's a stop made, where are you going? I'm going to this rally. You mind if I look in your truck? Sure. And here are these items. Does that constitute a violation of the ordinance if it's in the vehicle?
Mr. Mayor, Member, Councilmember Najarian, no, that, that doesn't necessarily mean that these items in and of itself is, is an illegal item to possess. It would become illegal once they are at the demonstration and they're, they're in possession of it. And as I said before, our, our intent is not to quote unquote, jam them up and find them in possession of these items. Our, our intent is to give warnings, preferably give warnings when we can and give guidance to, to folks who are showing up. Hey, if you intend on taking this pole or this brick or whatever to, to this demonstration, you're not allowed to take that. We actually have an ordinance in place that would prevent that. And obviously, we're looking for compliance. But if, if individuals are choosing not to listen to our warning and happen to persist and show up, then, then we would be able to enforce at that point.
Thank you. Chief Povolitis, you look like you're ready to say something, are you? No? Okay. He says that.
I mean, how about something more obvious? Yeah, how about something more obvious like a hammer? Is that covered in here?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Najarian, it is, the hammer, hatchet, they are all listed in here. And we have experienced that very specific scenario that you just presented several months ago. If you recall, the, the Americana and the Glendale Galleria was targeted on social media. And City Council had affected the curfew. And at that time, when we had individuals showing up in the city, kind of driving around in the, in the area, at the vicinity of, of the Americana, we were making stops. And we were finding individuals who not only had looted items from other cities, like in Santa Monica, but they were also in possession of hammers, crowbars and such that are actually listed in this ordinance. And as I said, that in itself alone may not constitute a crime. But putting it into context, if they were to actually show up to a demonstration or a protest with those items in hand, then we will certainly be able to enforce the law.
Thank you.
Right. Well, that was good work that weekend. I know that, that one of the posts said, bring your tools with you. We're going to attack the Galleria next. So now that, being in possession of these items, which would otherwise be innocuous, would be certainly reasons to, to get involved. Thank you. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you. Is there any other question? Or may, anyone's to, anybody wants to move the item? Oh, this is for.
Mr. Mayor, I think.
Yeah, Mr. Kasakian.
I, I believe Councilmember Divine wanted to introduce the ordinance. But before I allow her to, I appreciate this coming forward. And I appreciate the fact that we are keeping up with what other agencies are doing to keep their community safe. I'm more of a cynic because I believe that if someone wants to do harm, they'll find a way to do harm. If we ban items, they'll find other items to do it with. We've certainly seen people be very, unfortunately, in a harmful way, creative at these protests across the country in the last four years. And I'm not going to say which protest specifically because I think that we've seen ample more violence in the last few years than any one of us wanted to ever see in our lifetime in our country. And I, I was a little bit hesitant initially to support this because I also know that at various times, agencies can use these as was alluded to. And, and we've been assured that it won't be used to oppress or dampen any type of civil, not unrest, but civil disobedience, we shall call it. But certainly, this isn't necessarily the times of Tom Hayden and the Chicago Seven. This is not, we're not talking about Abby Hoffman. There are individuals who really do intend to do harm through violence, as we've seen at the Capitol and at various other anarchist rallies. So with my full faith and support for our police department to keep our community safe, when it comes back for a vote, I will support it.
This is just for introduction, right, Mr. Garcia?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. One of the councilmembers would need to introduce the ordinance.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Okay. Do I need a second?
You do not, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Okay. So we go to the next item?
Mayor, the next item is HC and has been moved to February the 2nd of 2021.
Okay. The number HC is pushed or moved as has been mentioned to next week.
Correct, Mayor.
Right. Next item, please.
Next item would be D Management Services regarding publication date of agenda reports in advance of council meetings. One motion providing direction of, to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Golanyan.
Yes. Mayor Agajanian, Members of City Council, this item before you is in response to Councilmember Kasakian's request for a report to explore the possibility of publishing our agenda, City Council and Housing Authority agendas, two weeks in advance of the meeting date. John Taktalian is going to present the research that he has done as far as the trend in, in other cities, as well as the challenges and pros and cons of doing that. Just wanted to bring to your attention that over the last few months, we have, thanks to staff's effort, have consistently been able to publish the agendas one week in advance on Tuesdays, sometimes in the evening, albeit, but at least it's been one, one week in advance. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Taktalian.
Before we go to Mr. Taktalian, to Chief Povolitis and Captain William, thank you. I should have said it before, but however, okay. John Taktalian, Deputy City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Agajanian, Members of the City Council. Mr. Golanyan provided a, a, a pretty in-depth introduction to this particular item. It is with respect to a request that was made by Councilmember Kasakian to bring agenda, to publish the City Council agendas 14 days in advance of the actual meetings. In evaluating this request, there's a number of factors to take into consideration as council deliberates this particular item tonight. First, currently, the city publishes our agendas seven days in advance, as Mr. Golanyan stated. And one of the concerns with increasing that lead time from seven to 14 days is that there may be delays in items actually coming to council. This is primarily due to the fact that staff relies heavily on third parties to get relevant information to us as we're preparing these staff reports. And those third parties can consist of applicants, appellants, colleagues in other cities who are trying to get information from, as well as individuals from various different professional trade organizations. Second, it's, in that regard, it's not uncommon for a lot of this information to come in at the very, very last minute, right before it's time to publish an agenda or to complete an agenda. And from there, the staff report has to get routed through a number of different channels within the organization before it's finalized and published. So any delay in receiving information oftentimes means that we're going to have to push the entire agenda publication and, and actual meeting date a full week beyond what we do now. As part of this request, I believe there was a request to consider publishing not only the agendas, but also the, I should say, the agenda reports, but also the staff presentations associated with those agenda reports. Couple of things to, to note on in that regard. First, agenda reports and presentations oftentimes aren't completed at the same time. First, the agenda report is done. And then following that, once it's approved, the presentation actually gets completed. So in order for us to not have any delays, we, we submit the, the, the agenda report and then start working on the actual presentation. But more importantly, it's not uncommon for a staff presentation to be modified until, up until pretty much the day before or the day of the City Council meeting. And, and that's primarily due to the fact that we provide briefings to City Council members. And oftentimes, questions that arise from members of the public who have read the report, presented those inquiries to council, or the inquiries coming directly from council, require us to maybe amend that staff report to make it a little bit more clear. I'm not saying that we can't republish staff presentations if we were to publish them 14 days in advance. But what that would require us to do is actually publish a supplemental agenda. The drawback with publishing supplemental agenda, even though it's allowed by the Brown Act, is that it's going to cause, it will likely cause, I should say, confusion amongst the public because what they see originally, up to two weeks in advance, could very likely have changed by the time it's being presented to the City Council. As a result, staff does not recommend that we, I, I should back up a second. It's important to note that the, the Brown Act doesn't require the publication of staff presentations. And that's primarily due to the fact that a staff presentation really is nothing more than a reiteration of the facts that are presented in the staff report itself. So based on those facts, staff wouldn't recommend that we publish presentations 14 days in advance or any number of days in advance along with the staff report. Finally, one thing to note as we have this discussion is that there are oftentimes where we simply wouldn't be able to bring certain items in front of council with a, with a 14 day mandate, that an item be published 14 days in advance. What I mean by that is it's common for us to receive very last minute funding opportunities, grant funding opportunities. This is primarily a prevalent situation in the Community Services and Parks operation where there will be pots of money that become available because somebody either didn't use it, it was a second round that wasn't anticipated. We receive notification of it via email or a letter with an extremely tight turnaround. That turnaround could be as, as quick as 14 days or less. If we were mandated to publish 14 days in advance, we wouldn't be able to have enough time to prepare the staff report, bring it to council and, and seek authorization. time to prepare the staff report, bring it to council and seek authorization. So it's not to say that that has anything to do with the recommendation or the direction that council takes tonight. It just means that I think we would have to have some sort of a carve-out for certain circumstances where there just isn't adequate time to fulfill a 14-day advanced publication mandate. Finally, I should note that in preparation of the staff report, we did survey a number of local cities, 12 to be exact. We actually sent out a number of, a larger number of requests, but only 12 responded in the timeframe that we had to prepare this report. Of the 12 cities, six of them published their agendas between three and eight days. Actually, I should, let me back up. Of the 12 cities, the, all the cities published between three and eight days prior to the meeting date. Of those 12, six of them actually only hold their meetings every other week. So even if they have a six or seven-day publication deadline, they have two weeks to prepare those staff reports and publish them. So with that, that's the crux of the staff report. Staff would recommend that if the council continues to desire to have an advanced agenda publication, that we not focus on a 14-day, because 14 days would fall on the Tuesday, and it's extremely difficult to have a publication prepared and submitted 14 days in advance as we're all sitting here doing what we do. Rather, we would recommend that council consider a 10 to 12-day. And the reason for the 10 to 12 range would be that there are times that that 10 could fall on a weekend, or the 12 would fall on a weekend. We'd want to, we wouldn't want to have our staff coming in on the weekend to publish agendas that likely nobody will see until Monday morning, anyway. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions that there might be.
Thank you, Mr. Taktalian. Before I go to my council colleague, I just want to say, when I came here the very first time, I was surprised that I was getting the binder, which is something like this, at the time, on Fridays after exactly 5:00 p.m., when this joint would close, basically. And I was complaining that, because I'm very busy on the weekend, I have to run a TV station and I have my own program, so I couldn't look at what's going on until Sunday afternoon. So I asked, at that time, City Manager, that if this can be done a little bit earlier, that I can take the binder on the Friday morning, so this way it would be easier for me, I mean, for what I was doing. It would be very hard after 5:00 p.m. to come here and get the binder. Anyway, and I was told they can't do it. And I have to say, I'm glad that we are doing now before Friday 5:00 p.m. Recently, I have seen definitely just from the time, Mr., our new interim City Manager, Golanyan is here, we are getting it much sooner. As far as I'm concerned, I want to see the binder to be ready or the materials to be ready, whether through internet or on the book side or printed side, to get it Wednesday of the week before next Tuesday. Like tomorrow, I get for the next week. Wednesday after our meeting to receive my information through internet or binder for the next week. That's my desire. But I will go to my colleagues and I start with Mr. Najari.
You know, I'm prob, I probably should have the least weight in this because I've been doing this for over 10 years. It definitely gets easier reading reports, understanding them and deciding it, you know, if you've got a few terms under your belt, which I do. I do want to note that we, recently meaning in the past few years, started the City Council Roundtable briefings. So every, for me, it's Monday, I get a chance to meet with all the staff and the authors of the reports and go through any sort of issues that we have there. So that part, I'm very happy. You know, I have to defer to staff. I'm not on the inside. I don't know how readily available the reports would be and how accurate they would be if we asked them for the two-week turnaround. The point being, however, is that we, as council members, be as well-briefed as possible before we get to the meeting. And I'm gonna, I'm just going to leave it with those sort of general remarks and turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Kasakian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that having something formalized and requiring that these reports and packets are presented to council and to the public further ahead than they're currently available or have been available in the past is in the best interest of transparency and efficiency in terms of how we do our, we carry out our responsibilities and how the public is able to understand what we discuss in these chambers that impacts everyone's lives. I've been on the end of preparing these packets and awaiting the receipt of reports from staff. I appreciate the challenges that staff may have, and I'm also willing to acknowledge that 14 days may be excessive and may present other issues. But I would like to see something that memorializes that we tried to receive these reports no less than 10 days before. If we can do 10 days, I think it's sufficient time. I think as we move forward and other councils come after us, and staff will look back and say, how did we ever do this any other way? I think one of the advantages of it will be that it gives staff ample time or give us ample time to read through the reports, the community to read through reports, to understand and ask questions. We get an opportunity to have briefings by staff, but sometimes the public does not. And not that the public needs to have a one-on-one briefing, but they'll at least, if there's something in a report that makes them raise an eyebrow or raise a question, they'll have an opportunity to ask it somewhere outside of just simply the council meeting. In addition to that, I would like to note that we have, we have a practice now, or it's been, there's a streak, rather I'd call it, of providing these packets at least a week ahead of the meeting. But I don't want to rely on a streak. I want something that puts this in place. So anyone else that comes afterwards, if there's a change in management, if there's change in staff, there's change in people writing the reports, none of that allows for people to fall back on bad habits. And I do, as the mayor mentioned, and I'm sure our veteran colleagues are aware, know of instances when staff reports were completed and submitted and published and distributed at the 11th hour, literally on Friday, staff staying behind, putting in overtime to do this. One of the reasons, by the way, I should note that we have an opportunity to get these packets out earlier now is because of the digitizing of the process of circulating packets, which was initiated, I think, well, it was initiated when I was city clerk, but has been completed and carried out under Mr. Ajemian's watch and the City Manager's team in assistance, along with ISD. So physical reports are no longer circulated around City Hall and sometimes people wondering where they are, which causes delay. Certainly, we've seen that improvement, but I also like to see us get into a habit of getting things prepared, like for instance, you know, when there are contracts, we know contracts may need to be renewed. It shouldn't have to wait until the last minute to do those reports. I understand grants also come up at the last minute. What I would like to suggest is what Long Beach does, has done, is currently doing, which is to have the packet prepared, have the reports prepared, and then if there needs to be a supplemental agenda item, if there's an item that needs to be added, then you have a supplemental agenda that's published within the requirements of the California Brown Act that says, you know, no less than three days before you publish it, and you also attach to it a memo explaining as to why this has to be added after the fact. So the public knows what the circumstances were for this being added, and the council knows. And it'll also keep the individuals in charge of writing these reports somewhat honest and on task, so it doesn't become, in Long Beach, I think they called it the pink sheet of shame or the green sheet of shame. It had a different cover on it. So staff would do everything they could to avoid having something on the supplemental agenda. However, it does happen, and there's legitimate reasons for it to happen, and I understand that. But I think if we were to adopt a model that Long Beach has, I think that would suffice. So I would like to see this implemented. I think it will make our lives easier. It won't make us all feel like we're cramming for a final. Certainly won't make me feel like I'm cramming for a final before every Tuesday as I read through the reports. Everyone has different obligations and responsibilities. I certainly know that it's, even having attended meetings as a clerk and having been accustomed to seeing many of these reports, it still requires a lot of research and a deeper understanding to fully be informed and make the best decisions for the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Devine? Ms. Devine?
Councilmember Devine, we can't hear you.
Mike. I know, I was on mute. Sorry about that. Yes, I remember when I first was elected to council and I used to go down on Fridays to pick up the agenda, and I'd go down at 1:00 and I'd say, no, come back at 3:00. No, come back at 4:00. And finally, I got to the point where it was, call me when it's ready. And now that we're getting them on Thursdays, it's a luxury. So I think that in most cases, when you're first on the council, it does seem like a lot of, a lot of work with so little time, but as Councilmember Najari said, you kind of get into the groove and your time management becomes more, kind of, it's just a better for you, you know, read it once, read it twice, do your research, research, and then Monday's the briefing. So having them on Thursday, early Thursday, is, I think, quite sufficient unless there's a complicated item, something that needs more research, such as an appeal, or when we get to Grayson or Shoal or any of those other complicated issues, then having a, the report early or, you know, I know Mr. Golanyan puts out his weekly reports, as did the previous city managers, and they always have the future agendas. And I think if we look at those future agendas and there's something on there that we have a question about, that we think this is going to take more than just three, four, five quick reads or, and some research, then we can request more information. But I understand where Mr. Kasakian is coming from. You know, he's a busy man and this is a lot of work. There's no doubt about it. And I think what we should do is, is ask staff again for a suggestion for the best way to do this, the earliest that they can get it done, and leave it at that. And I'll be more than happy to abide by whatever the consensus is. But I'm satisfied with Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brat.
Yeah, thanks. This was actually one of the first things I talked to City Manager Beers about when I started on the council and asked if we could have the materials out 10 days to two weeks before the meeting. And she explained, you know, the challenges, but did make an effort to start bringing those, that date earlier and earlier. And I know that since Mr. Golanyan has been our interim City Manager, he's done a really good job of getting the packet out on the Tuesday before the following council. And I can live with that. I mean, 10 days would be better, but if we can make it not just as Councilmember Kasakian just said, not just a lucky streak, but, or a good streak, but if we can make it the practice to get the reports out Tuesday before the following council, to me, I can live with that. That's fine. 10 days would be better, but that's, that's what I'd like to say about that. The other thing is, I do, I do want us to do the same for commissions. And actually, let me, let me just dial back for a second, because I think the thing about getting these packets out early is, is not really just for us, but it's for community members that have an interest in different topics. And I know what I do when I get the packet is I look at what's, what's in there, and I'll reach out to various people that I know have an interest in certain things. You know, I know who's interested in arts things, who's interested in design review, who's interested in environmental, who's interested, you know, whatever it might be. And ping them, let them know what's out there, because I appreciate the input. I'm not an expert in most things, and I need that, and they need time to go through it so that they can then give me input. So I think that's a big part of what it is. It's not just for us, it's for the, it's for the public. And so when it comes to commissions, we have the same issue. I know, for instance, I think we had a commission meeting, I think it was Parks, but I don't remember, yesterday, and the agenda came out on, you know, Friday at whatever it was, just maybe an hour before the point where we would have had to cancel the meeting because it wouldn't have been the 72 hours. So I would like to see our commission materials also come out, because our commissioners are volunteers and they've got full-time jobs, and they need time as well. And then just the last thing I want to say is, somebody pointed this out to me, the Burbank City Clerk on their, on the website, has a really good agenda forecast, which goes out right now. I looked at it today, it goes out to March. And I think another thing that we should try to do is set out where, you know, where we're headed and what's coming up, what's coming down the pipe, as far out as possible. And they're able to do it out till, out to early March. And I think that really would help a lot of people get, get ready for things. So if, if staff could look at that and see whether we can do something similar on our website, I think that would be fantastic.
Thank you. I just want to, Mr. Golanyan.
Go ahead, Mr..
Okay. I just wanted to add, if there's consensus on this, to have it latest Wednesday before next Tuesday. As far as public are concerned, public is, they have one item to review. If this, our booklet or our information is out, so they have one week to review the matter which is interesting them. So this package causes problem for us because we have to review every item. So that's why I want to suggest again what I said before, to have the package or the information Wednesday before next Tuesday. I think that will be ample time to review everything. Okay. Mr. Golanyan wants to, I'm sorry. Mr. Golanyan?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, Mayor of City Council, thank you for, for the very helpful feedback. Appreciate it. If I may suggest, and it's up to, entirely up to councilors, just to, so that we are not on this nice streak of seven days, we can potentially memorialize it and make it a policy that we shall, as staff, publish the agenda definitely seven days in advance. However, we'll endeavor to, when we can, depending on the number of items and depending on receiving the information that we need from outside agencies and folks, will make it, we'll try to make it for 10 days in advance, but no later than seven days for sure as a matter of policy. That's just a suggestion, but.
When you have seven days, the problem I have with seven days, that's why I'm emphasizing on Wednesday.
Right.
Is seven days, it means the day we have a meeting.
Seven days, yeah, seven days in advance of the following meeting, we'll publish the agenda electronically and it's available in digital format. But you are, what you're referring to is the printed packet.
Or under, even electronically.
Electronically, it's available seven days in advance.
Okay. I mean, as long as, to me, as long as on Wednesday electronically, if it's possibly booklet, for some people, they want to see the pages and to touch it and, you know. But if we have Wednesday before the coming Tuesday, I think everybody should be happy with it.
Yes. Again, it's up to, up to council. I'm offering seven days, as we have been doing for the last several months.
When you say seven days, that's.
Tuesdays. So it'll be on Tuesday.
So Tuesday before next Tuesday?
Correct.
But you guys on Tuesday are very busy. That's why I was pushing for Wednesday, that at least.
I know. But we have been able.
If you are happy with it, I am happy with it. No problem. Mr. Brat?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Brat?
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to say, you know, if staff thinks. Yeah, I just, well, I just wanted to say, you know, if staff thinks Tuesday works, let's, let's stick with Tuesday. And usually they're coming out where, you know, I mean, I know in my case, I'm not looking at it on Tuesday, but at least Wednesday morning, we're finished with the previous week's council, wake up in the morning and it's there. And I can, and I can start looking at it at my, you know, at my convenience on Wednesday. So I think saying Tuesday, and I'd like to move that we, we adopt Mr. Galanian's recommendation. I think it makes sense.
Okay, one second, Mr., one second. Mr. Kasakian going to have maybe something different. Let's finish with that, then you can move the item. Okay, Mr. Kasakian.
I do agree. Thank you, Mayor. I do agree with Councilmember Brotman about the agenda forecast. We have that available. I know that staff has that available. Public should see it as well. And if something changes, so it changes. Ultimately, I think consistency and predictability is going to help bolster transparency and help you more trust in what we're doing. And we need to be upfront. And if there are changes, there are changes. We own up to it and explain why things move around as they inevitably do in any organization, especially the city government. What I can't seem to understand is why, like, if we do eight days, like Long Beach does, what would prevent us from doing that? They meet fairly often, multiple times, and they have their agendas prepared eight days in advance. And they do supplemental agendas for anything that needs to be added three days before. I think we're all, you know, as staff, as well as perhaps some of my colleagues who are, who have been more accustomed to this, are very used to doing it a certain way. Let's try a different way and see. I think there's only upsides to it, to providing this information earlier. I don't think that there's necessarily a downside to it, whether someone receives it the day after or whatever the case may be. I think we just try the Long Beach model. If it doesn't work, then we'll try something else. But ultimately, there's no harm in getting information out earlier and in a more predictable and transparent way.
Ms. Devine?
Yeah. I'm trying to work this out in my mind, but if we do them 10 days in advance, are we going to have an overlap? Like, I will receive my agenda for the following week before this week's council meeting, and it's going to sit around for three days while I'm preparing for this week to get to next week? Am I?
That's why, that's why I was saying Wednesday. So we are done with one and start with the next.
I agree. Mayor, I totally agree with you. I totally.
That's why I still push for Wednesday to be, to have it ready. If they agree with me, that will be the best way. We know we finished the other one. So it's not be confused with the new.
Exactly. And one more comment that I have. Kudos to Zed Mullins, our former employee in Management Services, who's the city clerk at, in Burbank, for doing that. And thanks for that suggestion. It's a good one.
Thank you. Mr. Brot.
Well, I was, I was going to make a motion, but since Councilmember Kasakian was the one that asked for this, I think it's appropriate that he make the motion. My suggestion, as I said, I'm satisfied with what staff is recommending, what Mr. Galanian is recommending. And I'd like to extend it to commissions. And I would like staff to work on a longer-term agenda forecast and publish it. But I'll let Mr. Kasakian structure it the way he thinks is best.
Mr. Mayor, I think that, I think that eight days should be adequate. It would mean that the agenda packet would have been for next week, would have been prepared yesterday and available if someone decided to then get a jumpstart or ask questions. I think what Long Beach has done is fine. I think that if someone wants to look at it on Wednesday, they can. But I think just making that as, as the goal would be, I think would be the best way moving forward. It's a week and one day. It gives us ample time. That's shortening it from two weeks or 12 days or even 10 days to eight days, which other cities do as well. I would also like to make sure that we have an agenda forecast published publicly for the public to access and see what is coming down the pike in terms of city council. I asked my colleagues to indulge us. As someone who has actually worked in the office and with the responsibility of making it available to you, I assure you that this will not be an inconvenience of having an agenda published earlier than we have had it up until now.
What I was trying to suggest, Mr. Kasakian and Brotman, why we don't say to have it ready electronically or whatever, Wednesday, Wednesday before next meeting, if they can do it earlier, that will be better. But at least to have it ready Wednesday before.
No, no later than, fine, no later than six days, but eight days should be the requirement.
At this point, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Garcia wants to add something. Let's listen to him. Maybe he has this wise ideas to tell us what to do.
I'm not sure it's wise. I just think somebody should make a motion and probably that way you can start.
I'll make a motion for eight days with the agenda forecast to be public as well. I'd like to just try that. And if I can get a second.
One second. Eight days, one second. Eight days means.
Between eight to six days, fine.
No, but I'm saying, let's say later to be ready Wednesday, because this way we don't mix up with the week before. That's what I was trying to see.
Eight to six days.
If they can get it ready before, that's great. But I say Wednesday, so not to mix up with the week before, if it's possible.
So if I may, so.
Mr. Garcia.
Councilmember Kasakian, your motion is for that the agenda reports shall be published no later than six days, but the, the city shall endeavor to publish them eight days prior. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Eight or seven?
He said, I think.
Eight to six days. Tuesdays is a council meeting day. The city clerk staff would not be able to do it in that, on that day.
All right. I was trying to avoid to be on Tuesday, when we are here and they are busy with us. I was trying to push it the other way. But anyway.
If I may also, and then Councilmember Kasakian, is part of your motion to publish the agenda forecast?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I make a friendly amendment to add commissions' agendas to that same formula?
Sure. I'll accept a friendly amendment.
Okay, then I'll second.
But we have to, I wish we would, about the other committees, maybe we should discuss with the, with the staff to see how they feel about it. All of a sudden, we added something. And I see that Mr. Galanian, maybe we leave that out until they review it and see the possibility of doing this. I don't know. That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Mayor City Council, Mr. Takhtalian's research and, and study did not include commissions, obviously. But if it's council's desires to move in that direction, it would be helpful for us to, to check with staff liaisons for those commissions and boards and come back to you.
Yeah. I would suggest we do that, Mayor.
Okay. Can we leave that out? And then we vote on the motion which Mr. Kasakian was.
Mayor, before we vote, I do have a caller on the line for the side.
Oh, okay. Let's go to the caller. What can I say?
David Eisenberg. David, you're live. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening, councilmembers and Mayor Agajanian. My name is David Eisenberg. I'm Glendale resident. And I want to chime in that I find, for the city council agendas, I find the publication that usually comes out on Tuesday night or Wednesday morning. And as a citizen, this is okay for me, although I can understand why councilmembers would need the reports earlier as soon as possible. But what I'm concerned about is, you have an agenda forecast. And I know that Councilmember Kasakian and Brotman have mentioned agenda forecast. And Burbank has all the way up until, well, they don't have a meeting on March 20, 23, but they, they mentioned that meeting. And so people know issues that are coming up. We don't need to know the details of what's happening. But as a citizen, I would certainly like to know that in, you know, two or three weeks, you're going to talk about the Redugawarsh or, you know, an arts program or something, just an idea of what's coming up. But we don't need the details. I'm perfectly happy. But I also agree with the, the commissions. You know, the, the Parks Commission's agenda didn't come out until just about three or four hours before the Brown Act deadline. And, you know, those agendas, it would be nice to see commission agendas a week before also. So thank you for all your discussion and your, and your concern about doing a thorough job.
Thank you, Mr. Eisenberg. Is there any other caller?
Mayor, there is no other caller.
Thank you. Okay. Now, where we are?
We have a motion in a second.
A motion, was there a second?
We have a motion in.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to keep the boards and commissions in there. I do not see a actual serious concern as to why they cannot be done in the same period of time that council agenda package. Essentially, it's the same process, just specific to a board or a commission. And also, in my motion, if it's not clear, I would like to have the, the supplemental agenda model utilized if, if it proves to be useful in the cases that Mr. Takhtalian recommended or suggested.
And I'll reiterate my second on that whole package.
Mr. Garcia.
I just want to repeat it so we're all clear. It'll be a requirement that agenda packets, reports be published no later than six days and that the city will endeavor, six days prior to the council meeting, the city staff will endeavor to publish it eight days, no later than eight days prior. And then there will be a supplemental agenda for those items that come after the posting of the agendas. And the, the staff will publish the agenda forecast. And this rule will also apply to the city's boards and commissions.
So do, anybody is moving that? Mr. Kasakian?
I did.
And do you have a second? All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Mr. Najarian?
Councilmember Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. And thank you, Mr. Takhtalian and Galanian. Okay, what's next, please?
Public Works Regarding Revisions to Recycling Ordinances, one, introducing revisions to Chapter 844 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 entitled Refuse, Yard Trimmings and Recyclable, recyclable material collection and disposal to adopt state mandated commercial refuse diversion requirements.
Okay, Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Agajanian, Mayor City Council. This report is related to some revisions that staff's proposing to add to our recycling ordinance, essentially to conform to state's commercial refuse diversion requirements. I'm going to turn it over to Yazdan Imbrani, our Public Works Director, for an introduction. And who would present the presenter, Dan Hargrove, our Assistant Director of Public Works.
Mr. Imbrani, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Agajanian and members of city council. This report before you has several revisions to our Glendale Municipal Code to bring it in alliance with, or in alignment, I should say, with Assembly Bill 341, which is the mandatory commercial recycling, and Assembly Bill 1826, which is mandatory organics recycling requirements. We've modeled it as per the California Department of Resources Recycling and Recovery, otherwise known as CalRecycle. And we have a very short presentation on that that's going to be done by Dan Hargrove, Assistant Director of Public Works. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Hargrove.
Okay, who's presenting it? Mr. Hargrove, Mr. Hargrove.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Just to, I believe there's a PowerPoint that's associated with this that we have coming up. Very good. Thank you very much. So here's the introduction of our solid waste ordinance amendments, which is Chapter 8.44 of the Municipal Code. Next slide, please. Just a little focus on the objectives. Although portions of the ordinance have been revised, there has not been a comprehensive overall of the ordinance in a number of years. Some of the terminology and contemporary practices have been cleaned up in this, this version presented tonight. Although the primary objective of this effort is to really establish continuity with state laws. Cal's Recycle has put out model ordinances and hosted workshops that reflect state regulations. And although we had to tailor them to, of course, the Glendale, to Glendale, we utilized and incorporated the state model into our ordinance. Also, we wanted to ensure what, any of our amendments are consistent with our city zero waste plan that was adopted in 2010. Next slide, please. Quick background, so the, the, the regulations of focus are AB 341 and AB 1826. These have already been implemented. And, and I'll give you, give you a little refresher. I know that the council has been, is familiar with these, but just as a refresher, so we know what we're focused on in a moment. The, the state had, CalRecycle had determined that California was not going to meet its statewide diversion goals for 2020. And as a result, they, they took two key measures last year to try to increase diversion. One was to lower the compliance threshold for applying state regulations from business generated generating four cubic yards of refuse per week to two cubic yards. So a little bit tightener, tightening of the, who would be included in that. And then the other was conducting a statewide performance evaluation of commercial programs for county and local agencies. For Glendale and a number of other communities, CalRecycle asked that we establish a commercial compliance plan for improving diversion efforts. The city submitted their plan in February last year, and it was approved by the state in July. We set our own benchmark for bringing the revisions to the ordinance for the end of last year. We're just, just behind that curve. And of course, again, this is, is based on those, those model ordinances. Next slide, please. So just a quick referral to the state regulations in question. AB 341 is mandatory recycling for businesses that, here you have, that generates two cubic yards or more of commercial solid waste per week, or as a multifamily dwelling of five units or more, need to arrange for recycling services and then associated programs and outreach and education along with that. And then next slide, please. And then the second regulation of focus is AB 1826. This is the mandatory organics regulation. And that businesses to, to need to recycle organic waste depending on the amount of waste they generate per week. And again, this is moving to two cubic yards in this coming summer, and all the associated organics recycling programs, the outreach to multifamily dwellings, and, and businesses that would be affected by this law. So next slide, please. Okay, as far as the modifications to this solid waste ordinance, here are some of the key revisions. Of course, there's a lot of definitions and things like that that have been adjusted. But throughout the body of the document, it's abstracted and organized understanding of the responsibilities of all waste generators, residential, multifamily. This is the former, or existing, I should say, code is, it's not as, it's not as precise in that. So, so this is, is something that the state wanted to see, is that we clarify who the generators are. Again, the, the focus of the, the revisions are dealing with commercial generators. And there are some more specific provisions that were modified associated with this. Here again is the, the businesses who need to subscribe for collection services if they produce more than two cubic yards of refuse. Also, there's provisions allowing the city to conduct compliance inspections. This is, this is part of the state requirements that we, we are the authority that needs to ensure that these codes are being met. So we need provisions to check for compliance. There's allowances of commercial generators to self-haul their refuse and with conditions that they set for keeping and providing the city with record of what they're diverting. So a company like Whole Foods may have its own system for backhauling their, you know, their food recovery items or even their waste. But what we, what the, the ordinance would allow us to do is to. items or even their waste, but what the ordinance would allow us to do is to ensure that they provide record of that to the city, so we can include that in our reporting to the state. There's also allowances of commercial customers to apply for waivers for noncompliance with the state law. These have to do primarily with generators that may not produce two cubic yards of waste, so there's an application process and review process for that that would be administered. And also, situations where there's space limitations. You may have a very old multifamily apartment, multiple stores with a single chute, and a very small enclosure, and they may not be able to put a second recycling bin or green waste bin. So, there's a process for those customers to apply for a waiver that says we just can't do, meet these requirements. And then, finally, there's requirements that are included in the ordinance for ensuring that their store separation is special events. Next slide, please. So, the ordinance that you're looking at this evening is the first phase of plan revisions to the municipal code. We will need to come back to council within the next few months with a second phase of updates, which will focus on state laws and local circumstances that have not yet been formalized. Here is the, of course, the first modifications to the plan for this will be to incorporate and reflect key provisions of SB 1383 that was recently finalized and are currently being implemented in the state. Here to, CalRecycle has released model ordinances and held workshops on implementing SB 1383, and we're in the process of creating language consistent with those ordinances that will come to council in the near future. And of course, the second phase will also reflect language that we may need to include to address the determination on our commercial franchise program. I feel that both these, what you're looking at tonight is really the more comprehensive. I think the second phase will be, will have a nice foundation with what you're reviewing tonight, that to implement these additional requirements as well. And with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hargrove. Thank you. Is there any question from Mr. Hargrove?
Yeah, I have a number of questions.
Okay, Mr. Brotman.
Thanks, Mr. Hargrove, for that report and for the work putting this together. So, one thing is, I noticed that multifamily is being exempted from the requirement to separate food waste, and I'm just wondering, is that exemption, is that exemption being carried over to SB 1383? Or what? You know, and why would we not want multifamily to separate food waste, you know, when they kind of understand in some cases that they're not, they don't have the facilities? But if they do have the facilities, seems like we would want them to do it. Yes, there may be provisions that we need to, that would address that with SB 1383. I'm not clear right offhand what those would be at this point, as we're still kind of disseminating that information. But for now, that's, it does not include, the multifamilies do not include organics in the revisions. These are focused on primarily businesses, and for organics, you're looking at primarily food service establishments, you know, restaurants and grocery stores and things like that that produce a great deal of food waste. Okay. Well, if you could take a note of that and look into it for SB 1383, I'm not sure it's required by state law, but it's something that we could ask for of our multifamily properties, and we could do exemptions rather than across the board on a case-by-case basis depending on, you know, any space limitations that they have. You know, related to that, and it's, this is not really probably your department, this is more in Phil Anzofame's area, but you know, there is this issue of physical space, and going forward as new multifamily units are built, we should look into what we can do to make sure that space is provided for a three-bin system, and you know, the chutes are designed in such a way that will accommodate the future of recycling, which is going to be separating organics from other items, right? So, that's something I hope staff can also take note of and see what we do in terms of building codes and requirements, so that we, you know, we're creating an environment where multifamily residents can be in compliance, right? Another, and a question I have, and you may not know this off the top of your head, but just a data point maybe for all of us is, what percentage of the households in Glendale are multifamily? And what's, how does it break between the small multifamily developments that are going to be serviced by the city going forward, and the larger ones that are going to be serviced by our franchise haulers? That's something I would like to know, and I don't expect you have that off the top of your head, but I just, maybe you could come back to us on that? Or maybe you do know? Yeah, certainly. Yeah, I don't have it on the top of my head. I do know that proportionately, the multifamilies that are greater than five units are, it's a much larger proportion than the multifamilies, multifamilies two to four units is that other category that would be retained by the city. Okay. Well, if you could make a note of that. Another thing is, I noticed that paper is not included in the list of recyclables. It's indicated as organic, and it can be organic, but a lot of paper, well, maybe you know better than I do. I mean, traditionally, a lot, there were certain types of paper that could be recycled. There was a market for office paper and perhaps like cardboard and newsprint. I don't know if those markets are still operating, but I think if you could take a look at that, because I think we should make it clear that there are recyclables in the paper category, and then there are some that are nonrecyclables that we will be treating as organics because they're compostable. Yeah. And just to respond to your question, Councilmember Brotman, yeah, clean paper is still a recyclable commodity, and certainly, there's food grade paper that would become organics. Okay. And I didn't see that in the list of recyclables, so if you could take a look at that. I have a few other things here. So, one of the things I noticed, it says that we ask for waste generators to clean their receptacles after every use. It seems excessive if they're being collected every day. Are we really expecting them to clean their receptacles? You know, it says clean them thoroughly and et cetera. I mean, that's going to use a lot of water. Is that really what we want? Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Brotman, yeah, it's, there is, I mean, these are all subject to administration, and while it is desirable to have a cart that is retained in clean and sanitary condition for public health reasons, among others, I think we would have the flexibility that we wouldn't be enforcing that we have a sparkling clean cart that's waiting for us for care. So, I think that there is a little, certainly having it sanitary is important, just like any other part of the property, but on the same token, I don't know that it has to be to that precise cleanliness. Okay. Well, if you could, I know we're just introducing the ordinance today, so if you could just make a note to look at that as well. And then, the last one I have is the de minimis waiver, where we say if you're below, I guess that, is it the two cubic feet, you are exempt, and we ask for verification every five years. Five years to me sounds like a very long time, and I'd like if we could shorten that. Maybe it's not every year, but maybe it's every two years, or maybe it's every three years. Anyway, those are, those are the main ones I have, and there's some other, like, small clarification points, and I think it's probably better if I send them to you. Actually, they were provided to me by somebody else, so I'll have them sent to you. They're just wording things that are a little bit unclear in the ordinance that could be clarified, and I don't want to go through them all here and waste everybody's time. So, I'll just make sure that gets sent to you. And that's it, that's it for me.
Thank you. Is there any other question from Mr. Hargrove? Okay. Anybody wants to move the item?
It's an introduction, Mr. Mayor.
I'll move the item. That's right, we're just introducing the ordinance.
Mr. Garcia, are you saying something?
He, that's all, it'd be introduced, and Councilmember Brotman just did it.
Okay. Is there a second?
It doesn't need a second, Mr. Mayor.
We don't need it.
Okay. Roll call, please.
No roll call, we'll bring it back next week for adoption.
Oh, we'll bring it back?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. You put the mask, I can't hear properly what you're saying. You put the mask, became harder to hear what you're saying. I just, one question I had, let me ask this question. The way it has to be separated, isn't the price going to go through the roof, collecting the trash? The prices? What will happen to it? Anybody can answer, Mr. Hargrove? What state is asking is what will happen to the prices of hauling the trash?
Typically, the model that we currently have is that recycling is a free service. The, our rates are based upon refuse, and to encourage people to recycle organics and recyclables, that those are a free service.
Okay. And also, the multifamily units, which they have already, they have trash chute, then, I mean, they have been exempt, some of them apparently. Isn't that a later time to separate them going to be very hard, because they drop the trash through the chute, and it comes down to, you know, through the trash can? So, how that will be managed at a later time to separate the different items?
Yeah. To answer your question, Mr. Mayor, that is, that is one of the, that is one of the provisions within the ordinance and in the state law, is a, there is a waiver process that customers can apply for, and we would review the circumstances, and certainly, those are situations that are just, if you have one chute and one bin, and that's all the space you have, that would be, that would be probably likely to have a viable for a waiver.
All right. Thank you. So, this item will come back, Mr. Garcia, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We go to next item now?
Mayor, next item is ADEF Human Resources Regarding Side Letter Agreement to City IBW Local 18 Memorandum of Understanding. One, Resolution Adopting a Side Letter Agreement Between the City of Glendale and International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 18 Union.
Okay. Mr. Golanyan?
Yes. Mayor Agajanian, Member of City Council, this item is related to our agreement with IBW Local 18, related to the project which is intended to convert our 4K to 12K electrical distribution lines, and I'm going to turn it over to Matt, Oil Director of Human Resources, to provide a report.
Okay. Mr. Doi.
Thank you, Mr. Golanyan. Mr. Mayor, members of council, the item before you is a resolution adopting a side letter agreement between the city and IBW Local 18 Union regarding the outsourcing of some IBW bargaining unit work to private contractors. As the council is aware, for well over 30 years, Glendale Water and Power has engaged in a longstanding reconstruction project to transition its 4KV electrical distribution lines to 12KV. This is an important project for the utility's electrical distribution system, which will enable a much higher capacity of power transfer for better reliability and an improved means to integrate some of the more environmentally friendly programs, including solar panels and electric vehicle charging systems. As I said, this is a very long-term project. With our existing staffing levels of line crews working at this pace, it will probably take several more decades to complete the reconstruction. In order to facilitate the conversion, GWP is recommending that we outsource a sizable portion of this work to private contractors. Now, the outsourcing of IBW bargaining unit work, particularly on this scale, is a matter of significant concern to the union and a meet-and-confer item under California state law. Thus, in November 2020, the city council authorized staff to meet and confer with the IBW to discuss the terms of the outsourcing proposal. After several meetings between representatives of the city and IBW, the parties have now come to terms on a tentative agreement in the form of a side letter, which will pave the way for the outsourcing of the 12KV conversion work, or some of that work, to private contractors. In exchange for the ability to outsource this work, the city made the following agreements with the union. First of all, overtime work for line mechanic crews would be a double time rather than time and a half while this conversion work is being undertaken with the private contractors. This involves about 20 employees, all in the electrical line series, out of the bargaining unit of approximately 110 employees. The second component would be that our in-house line mechanic crews would continue to get a share of the 12KV conversion work in addition to those that are sent out to the outside contracts. The third component would be that a minimum of, a minimum number of hourly electrical helpers and truck operators would be assigned to the in-house line mechanic crews to assist the line mechanics and help them focus on the more skilled and complex aspects of their work. As a side benefit to this, the helpers are also a great source of recruitment for future line mechanics. These IBW requests really focus on the retention and sustenance of the line mechanic crews as a component to this 12KV conversion project, which should be greatly facilitated as a result of this agreement. The resolution and side letter commemorating this agreement are provided for your consideration. If approved, GWP staff will procure contracts with qualified firms in the coming months to move ahead with these plans. That concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you. Also, want to let you know that Dan Scores, our interim general manager for Water and Power, is here as well to answer questions.
Thank you. Is there any question from Mr. Doi? No question? Wow. This is unbelievable. Anybody wants to move the item then?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Councilmember Najarian?
He's offline.
He's offline, I guess.
Last meeting.
I know, he's been having some technical issues.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, my, I'm using my backup device. I was trying to make a statement. Let me just, I know you're in the middle of roll call, if you will permit me just to make a statement.
So, you want to make any statement?
Okay. And that is that I do support this. At first blush, a double overtime payment may seem excessive. However, we have to realize that these linemen are in very short supply. They possess a very rare technical skill, and that is to basically climb up these poles and deal with 12,000 volts of electricity, and this is on top of their 40-hour workweek that they're performing this act. So, I definitely support that part of it. There was some question as to whether the other local union could be in line, first in line for the overflow work, but I understand that that request was later withdrawn due to the, bringing it up so late in the process. Regardless, I would support if there's any other opportunity to contract that we continue working with IBW locals, whether it's our own 18 or whether it was the alternate 47, so that we can be sure of the level of skill and consistency of craftsmanship in this work. That being said, I vote yes.
All right.
And Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Okay. Just before I go to the next item, I don't know who manages the-
Okay.
-the- Okay, I just, before I go to the next item, I don't know who manages the, uh, the temperature in this hall.
Mr. Mayor, your microphone's off, we, I can't hear you.
My microphone is off? My microphone is off?
I think we've lost the stage.
I, I see a mute button on the mayor's podium, or at least on the TV feed.
Okay. Now it's okay, everything is okay?
I can hear you, Dan and Artie. I don't know who else is on this line.
I'm here, I'm here.
Matt, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Dan.
Dan, I can hear you, I can hear you fine.
It may have lost the council chamber.
Oh, gosh.
You're on the council chamber box.
Can you hear me?
Hello?
This is Mike, can you hear me?
Meeting's over, who's mayor?
Yeah, it was, it was weird, I was having bad problems connecting, so I went to my cell phone.
Last, last week, they said the microphone they removed is not.
Can you guys hear us?
Can you hear me now?
The mayor pro tem.
Yeah, they, they can't hear us.
Am I still in January?
No, they can't hear us.
Can, can Artie hear me?
I can hear you, Paula.
Can you hear me?
Oh, there you go.
Oh, okay.
Oh, we can hear you.
Oh, there you are.
You can hear me? That's great. Okay, I was saying, uh, when I came to this place that around after, it was 6:05, because they were working on the system, voice system or cameras or technical works they were doing, it was so hot that when we started, I was about to take my jacket off. And now, for past hour and a half and two hours, it's so cold that I have to have another, next time, I will bring all the overcoat and layers of jackets. So when it gets hot, I will take it off and then as much as it gets cold, I will take it on. So this way, I will be comfortable here, I don't know why this.
We, we apologize for that, Mr. Mayor. Our facilities, uh, management is looking into that problem. It should have stopped at 72 degrees, but it, it didn't.
So it goes to 60 degrees, so as if we are sitting outside, so that's fine. Okay, what's next?
Next would be 8G Information Services Department Regarding Professional Service Agreement with Tyler Technologies Incorporated for the Purchase Implementation Software Licensing and Maintenance for the EnerGov Land Management System. Amendment with SDI Presence LLC for Consulting Services. One Motion Authorizing the Interim City Manager or Designee to Execute An Agreement with Tyler Technologies Incorporated in the Amount Not to Exceed $2,956,930 Plus a Contingency of Up to $160,930 For the Purchase Implementation Software Licensing and Maintenance of EnerGov A Land Management Software Solution For A Period Of Five Years And To Authorize The Purchasing Administrator To Issue Purchase Orders For The Continued Maintenance Support, Updates, Upgrades, And Licensing Of The Software For The Life Cycle Of The Product As Long As Funds Are Appropriated In I S D Application Fund For Such Purpose. Two Motion Authorizing Interim City Manager Or Designee To amend The City's Extend Existing Professional Service Agreement With SDI Presence LLC In The Amount Not To Exceed $402,480 Plus A Contingency Of Up To $80,496 To Expand The Scope Of Work To Include Project Management And Consulting Services Throughout The Implementation Of Land Management System.
Thank you, Mr. Golanyan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Agajanian, Member City Council. That was, uh, quite a description for this item, so I'm just gonna turn it over to, uh, Mr. Hakobov Sepian, our Assistant Chief Information Officer, for a presentation.
Mr. Hakobov Sepian, please.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor Agajanian and council members. As discussed, we are here today for, to provide two recommendations. The first is an authorization for a professional services agreement with Tyler EnerGov and the second is an amendment with SDI for consulting services. As you all know, we have been planning for this for quite some time. Council has been setting aside funding for this project through previous budget cycles. One second here while we get the PowerPoint going. Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. So what I'd like to do is get into what we would be covering in this presentation. First, I'm gonna talk about the background, the request for proposal, the RFP evaluation, the recommendations, and the proposed timeline, and any questions council may have. A land management system is, a land management system A land management system is an automatic public-facing services, public-facing system that is associated with community developments, license and permitting features. It also covers code enforcement and all of the inspections that the Community Development Department does, as well as some of the fire, life, safety inspections that the fire department does. This system does it all for the Community Development Department. It also maintains all of the historical data for all of the parcels in the city of Glendale, for all the developments and all the construction that goes on in the city. Why are we changing it? Well, we implemented this system in 2007, it's 14 years old. We've gotten as much mileage as we can out of the system, and it's time for a change. Technology has changed, and our tech-savvy users in our community, um, the residents, contractors, developers, they need more features, they need to do more, and they need to do it quicker. Given the limitations that we have, the city hired SDI to review the current business process and write an RFP. The RFP was issued in November 2019, and we sent it to 10 firms. We also advertised it on our city website. We received seven proposals, four of which were disqualified for not meeting the minimum requirements of the RFP. The remaining three were advanced to the next round of review. Those three vendors are Edsoft, our current provider, TruePoint, and Tyler EnerGov. What we did here is a three-pronged approach. The first layer was looking at the written evaluations, I'm sorry, the written proposals that they submitted. Really looked at what, everything they put in there, answering all our questions on paper. After we reviewed that, the top two were rated, and those top two were EnerGov and Excela. Those two vendors were then invited to the phase two of the three-pronged approach, and that is the proof of concept. Anybody can write anything on a piece of paper, but the proof of concept is really where you get to see it, demoed by the vendor. The vendors were invited for two-day virtual demos, where they went through everything, from start to finish, of what their product has to offer to this city. After reviewing that, the city of Glendale took it another step further, did our due diligence, went as far as we could. We contacted references, we took the vendor out of the equation. We went to our counterparts in other organizations and we said, "Show us what these systems can do." EnerGov, we went to LA County, Pasadena, San Mateo, to name a couple. For Excela, we went to San Diego County, Santa Monica, Torrance, also naming a couple. And we really saw firsthand what everybody was doing, how they were using it, what they thought of the vendor, how the system works, everything from A to Z. That was absolutely critical for our city to real, really realize where we were gonna go, what we were gonna go with. And after looking at the references and seeing what our counterparts in other organizations said, we picked one. We picked the one that best fits our needs, and that was Tyler EnerGov. Tyler EnerGov is a solution that is off the shelf. What that means is, it's not customizable. It is configurable. It does everything you needed to do right out of the box. That was absolutely critical for us as an organization. For the past 14 years, we've been dealing with a customizable application. That means we're modifying it, we're changing the code, we're, we're paying vendors to come in and help us do the coding. We are doing all kinds of work, change order after change order, we don't want to go through that. What we need is a system that is ready to hit the floor running for our city and for our community. What we're gonna gain from EnerGov is a 24/7 citizen portal access. We're gonna give the residents the ability to do things online, apply for a permit, go through the process online, and potentially even print the permits from the convenience of their own home without having to come into the office. The other major thing that we're gonna get is electronic plan submittal. This is something that people have been asking for from our Community Development Department. The ability to come in, uh, the need to come in to the permit center, carrying those heavy plans, to have plan checkers review it, mark it up, give it back, and go back and forth, that's gonna be eliminated. We're gonna use the technology to submit those plans electronically, review them electronically, and send them back to the people that are, uh, the applicants that are submitting them. Automated email notifications and alerts, they won't need to call the office, they won't need to come into the office. They can go online from the convenience of their own mobile device, their own computer, and see where they are in the application process, in the permitting process, in the licensing process. These are all key features that the community is gonna get, things that we should have been doing, and now we have the opportunity to do. It is also very important, as I mentioned earlier, that this is completely funded. It is from the implementation to the licensing, to the first five years of maintenance, we will not need any additional appropriation. We've been planning for this, we've been wanting to do this. We are also seeking an approval to amend the existing agreement with SDI. SDI has been implementing systems like this all over the state of California. They have a proven track record, and they even have a proven track record with the city of Glendale. They have done great things, and we don't want to risk this project from going south. We need this to be implemented without any delays, no impacts to the city or the community. And bringing SDI in with their project management experience will really get this going for the city. Proposed timeline, if we can get the council's approval tonight, we are looking to kick off the, uh, finish off the contract negotiations, execute the contract, and kick off this project as soon as February 2021, that's next month. And if everything, um, you know, everything goes according to plan, we are looking as going, we are looking to go live as early as spring 2022. We can bring this to the community and to the city really, really quick. That concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions from the council, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any question? No question? All right, can't hear anything.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Bradford.
Just, just wanted to congratulate staff on getting to this point. I've been in large organizations and implemented enterprise software, uh, and it's extremely complicated. And I know they have a long road to go in terms of the implementation, but just kudos, and, uh, it's exciting. And I, I hope at some point we can get a demo, um, into council, and so we can see the power of this new platform and what, what residents and what our, what our departments can do, uh, with it. So, um, I'm very supportive.
Thank you. Is there, yes, Ms. Devine, Ms. Devon?
Yes, I think this is a great step, uh, to take, and, uh, I want to, uh, thank, uh, Mr. Hopsepeian for the great report. Very nice, nice job.
Thank you, council member.
Thank you, is there any other, other comment, or otherwise, would you like to move the item?
I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Kasakian. Yes.
Najarian?
Najarian. Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hopsepeian and Mr. Bradford. Okay, uh, now, item H, H, and next item, please?
Next item is 8H Community Development Regarding Update On Status Of Designated And Pending Historic Districts. One is Motion To Note And File Report, two, Motion Providing Direction To Staff. And Mayor, I do have a caller on this item.
Okay, I guess first I go to, is there anything to, no, let's go to Mr. Golanyan first.
Yes. Mayor Agajanian, Member City Council, this, uh, report is being presented, uh, to you this evening in response to Councilmember Najarian's request, uh, a while back. And I'm gonna turn it over to Jay Platt, our principal planner, to make that presentation.
Mr. Platt, is he on?
Yes. Yes, I am.
Yeah, hi, Mr. Platt, please, go ahead.
Let me, um, share my screen so that we can, um, look at this. And, everyone can see this now?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
I can read also. Item H.
In both directions, so, um, I, I've divided this, uh, topic up into a few discrete segments that are kind of interconnected, but they stand alone as well. Mr. Mayor, I can answer questions in each section, or we can wait until the end, whether, whichever you prefer, or we can just wing it and see how it goes. Um, but I did want to start, just, I, I think appropriately with the city's first historic district, Royal Povard, which was designated in 2008. And just remind, uh, council and the public why we're doing this. Historic districts are kind of special places, and they have a, a sense of history, it's in some place, it's a visual coherent.
Mr. Platt? I'm sorry, but why you're, uh, you're echoing, I mean, the system is echoing, I am, uh, something is wrong in your office, maybe, is there anything else is on? Please speak closer to the microphone, be very close to microphone, maybe.
What I'm going to.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Platt, just, just give us one second, uh, our technical staff is trying to figure out what's going on. I don't think it's Jay's microphone.
Oh.
Just give it one minute.
Okay.
Jay, let's try again.
All right, how's that?
Much better.
Yeah, go ahead.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Um, so the idea is that there's something special about historic districts, and it's a tool that we've provided to the community. It's truly a grassroots effort to create a historic district. These are coming from neighborhoods to the city, not from the city down to the neighborhood. So it gives people an opportunity to kind of help, uh, create a system that's gonna help them understand how their neighborhood is going to change over time. And that's really one of the critical aspects of why we do this. In our, uh, ordinance that created the historic districts, we offer a variety of reading what a historic district does. I'm not going to read these for you, but I'll share what I share with residents who come to us looking to maybe create a historic districts, uh, district. And I think one of the critical things is that what, what our ordinance and what our district gives people is predictability of what's gonna happen in their neighborhood. Most people are choosing where they want to live when they, when they have the luxury of making this kind of choice based on how it feels, the look, the, the way they feel they'll belong there. And a lot of people choose neighborhoods because they like the way it looks today, and they don't want it to change, you know, five years, 10 years from now. In a historic district, we're able to do that very effectively in terms of maintaining the historic character of overall neighborhood. Uh, what's important to remember is that not every property in a historic district is itself historically important, but it's the kind of grouping of these buildings, which in the case of all of our districts so far, are single-family residences. But our ordinance is broader than that, we could theoretically have districts that have different property types. Right now, it's all residential neighborhoods. And in this predictability, what we're trying to provide is a sense that something like this isn't going to happen in anyone's neighborhood in a historic district. As a person involved in design review, I'll say this isn't gonna happen anywhere in Glendale, but I just am muted by the idea that somewhere this house exists, and, uh, certainly not the kind of thing we're gonna allow. Uh, the thing about districts is people worry, oh, you're gonna, you know, my neighborhood's not a museum, my house isn't a museum. So we want to make sure people understand that a district doesn't freeze the neighborhood in time. It's going to be changed, there always has been change, and we allow change to continue in districts. The thing that happens is we manage that change. We do that through using the Historic District Design Guidelines and the Principles of Historic Preservation, looking to make sure that any changes don't affect the historic character of the building or the neighborhood in a way that's gonna be detrimental while allowing those changes to happen. So in terms of the, the different topics I'll address, I wanted to start with the designated historic districts. Uh, we have seven, uh, districts that council has designated, starting in 2008. And you can see the, the circles representing the rough locations of these areas. It kind of forms almost a necklace around the Verdugo Mountain Foothill areas. And we have the one, uh, Cottage Grove District, which is down in the southern part of the city, which is also kind of at the base of Adams Hill. So there's some similarity that I can't quite explain in terms of why these neighborhoods have chosen to come to us to become districts. Each one of them tells an interesting story, each one of them has a diversity of, of building types, architectural styles, and stories to tell, and that's partly what we do in these districts, we memorialize those stories. This chart, um, I amended a little bit, I'll talk about the amendment in a second, from what you have, uh, in your package. But I just wanted to give a quick overview of some of the numbers, and I'll just focus on, on the totals for now, unless you have questions. And I'll just focus on, on the totals for now, unless you have questions. Um, currently, in our seven districts, we have 873 properties that are listed. Um, 708 of those are contributors. And a contributing structure in a historic district means it was built during the period of significance, the main period during that neighborhood's development. And it hasn't been changed much over the years. So it still visually can tell its story by retaining its character, its historic character features. Um, we have an ordinance that tells us certain thresholds that a neighborhood has to meet to become a district. One of those thresholds is what is the percentage of these contributors? And you can see it's varied in some of the districts over the years. We have an average of 82% contributor so far. We also have a number of criteria for designation, and you have to meet one of those. And all of our districts so far have met at least two, and one of them had actually six of them. So there is a diversity in terms of, you know, how closely these districts kind of tell the story on their history and development. Um, I, the part I added, um, and I know there's been a lot of community concern about our current districts that I'll talk about in, in the next section that are currently under review, and a lot of concern about how long it's taken. And I'll, I'll address that in a second. But I did add this timeframe column to, to this chart that you're looking at now, just to explain that, you know, the districts have taken different periods of time over, over the years that we've been doing this. And it's ranged from a year and a half in, in the case of early districts, two, two and a half years, to three and three and a half years. Um, I would say the average is probably with our current system for designation in place, two to three years is probably the right number for what a district should take. And I'll address the fact that our current districts haven't done that just in a second. Um, I, this is the last slide for this section, if anyone has any questions. Okay, I'll move on. We, we now have three pending historic districts. And a pending historic district means that we have a nomination submitted by residents in the neighborhood, and we've brought that to the Historic Preservation Commission, which is the first step, which I'll show you the flowchart in a second. Um, the Historic Preservation Commission has reviewed the nomination and said, yeah, we think that this neighborhood looks like it could meet the criteria and meet the thresholds for designation, so we want to move it forward in the process. So the three neighborhoods that we're looking at right now are South Cumberland Heights on the left and the Cumberland Heights Northwest Glendale neighborhood area, uh, the Casa Verdugo neighborhood, and then the Bellhurst neighborhood. And I'll talk a little bit more about each of those because council hasn't been introduced to these yet. You, you are all of various, uh, familiarity with these seven existing districts. And you can see what's interesting is these are continuing that ring at the, at the base of the Verdugo Mountains, which is an interesting, you know, feature of our district in Glendale. Starting with the South Cumberland Heights District, uh, this is a neighborhood that was part of the original Cumberland Heights Historic District. It was identified back in 2004. Um, but the city had some issues with how, what we had prepared in terms of an ordinance, we didn't have design guidelines at that point. So that district didn't move forward. Since then, it's been kind of come to us piecemeal. Where we first had the Art Even Highlands neighborhood come to us. We have the North Cumberland Heights neighborhood, both of those were designated. And now we have the South Cumberland Heights neighborhood, which fills in the southern half of the area originally identified in 2004. Here's a map of the actual district. Uh, so it's mostly above Kenneth Road, and then several houses along Kenneth Road on the south side and the north side. Um, we did have, uh, in the designation process, we have a lot of community input, as I'll show you. And we learned that some neighbors over in this northeast corner that's highlighted in yellow were interested in becoming part of the district. They said, hey, our neighborhood looked like the rest of the neighborhood. So when we brought this to our consultant, we said, why don't you look at these seven houses also and identify whether this could be an extension or not an extension, be included as part of the South Cumberland Heights district? And the survey did suggest that that's the case. So these are all part of the district that's under consideration right now, moving through the process. The Casa Verdugo neighborhood is a very different neighborhood. Um, it's on, on the east side of Brand Boulevard, it's on Mountain Street, and it's one of Glendale's earliest residential subdivisions. And one of the kind of cool things about this neighborhood is it's got a really interesting history in terms of its connection to Glendale's earliest history when we were, you know, a speck on, a small speck on the map. But we were becoming known in Los Angeles and in Southern California. And the restaurant Casa Verdugo opened first on Brand Boulevard, and then you're looking at the house that still stands today, as you can see in the bottom picture. It was the second version of the Casa Verdugo restaurant. It became a huge tourist attraction, and the, the red car line extended up Brand Boulevard and ended at this area. And the popularity of the area and the beautiful views and the, the higher elevation made it very desirable for development in the 1910s, 20s, 30s. So it became one of the most important early, uh, early neighborhoods, early subdivisions of Glendale. And then finally, our newest proposed historic district came to us at the end of 2020. Um, and it, we received information about it earlier, but we had to wait until we kind of were, um, processing the other two districts a little more fully. But this area is right next to Rossmoyn. It's actually in between Casa Verdugo and Rossmoyn. It down, boards down, there's a boundary between them on each side. And this area was developed by the Lamert Company, uh, which was a major developer in Southern California. This is their first development, and it's very interesting in that way. When we get a historic survey for this area, we're asking them to really kind of tie this neighborhood's history into the development and the concept of the Lamert Company brought to Southern California. And in all three cases, we have very interesting building stock. We have in Casa Verdugo, especially a lot of grassman houses. The other neighborhoods have a lot of, from the 20s and 30s, and the period revival, the Spanish, the future, the colonial that we see in other neighborhoods. And then we also have, uh, buildings that come from the 30s, minimal traditionals, and then the ranch houses and even from modern houses starting in the 40s and 50s. So the idea of these districts is really telling the story of how our neighborhoods have developed over time. Here's a great picture on the left showing Rossmoyn area on the right. And then the highlighted area on the left is the Bellhurst neighborhood. And you can see the orchards were still standing, and slowly the plots were being scraped and subdivided with the houses being built. And, uh, we've lost the orchards, but now we have our beautiful residential neighborhoods. We still have some old trees, uh, that still stand in some of these areas, which is kind of a great, uh, historical reminder. But, uh, that, that's an introduction to the three newest districts that are in process. This diagram shows flowchart for how districts get designated. This goes back to our 2007 historic district ordinance. And council at that time was very concerned that there'd be a lot of public opportunity to comment and a lot of buy-in from the public. So everything that's highlighted and blue shows is a public meeting before a commission or a board or council. Or we also have, uh, public meetings with community members and, and adjacent neighbors to focus on reality of what is a historic district? What does it mean if your house is in one? What are your responsibilities, opportunities? And right now, the Bellhurst neighborhood, because it's the starting, is in the petition phase. Um, they're actually circulating their petition right now, and that's the first of two petitions asking for a historic survey be conducted. Um, this South Cumberland Heights and Casa Verdugo neighborhood, their, their surveys have been completed, and we now have to have a public meeting, which we have to do. Both of these public meetings are going to be online, hopefully. And once that public meeting is done, there's going to be a second petition phase that's out of Heights and Casa Verdugo. That's a time when they have to gather the signatures of over 50, the owners of over 50% of the homes in the area. And that's a petition requesting that council designate historic district. Once we get that petition, assuming they meet the threshold for the number of signatures, um, we then have a quick succession of HPC, Planning Commission, and City Council. So my best estimate for the timing is that South Heights, Casa Verdugo, if all, if all goes smoothly, and ultimately if council decides they're worthy of designation, the designation could happen this calendar year in 2021. Um, but here's where you can see that the two applications for South Cumberland and Casa Verdugo came in in early, middle 2017. And so it's already been three and a half years since we've been considering those. And I totally understand that some of the proponents, some of the people in the neighborhoods, I know the Historical Society, there are a lot of people frustrated about this. I, I take personal responsibility for some, some of this delay. It's been hard to balance and prioritize workloads in the last few years. Um, and the planning department is actually making steps to kind of improve that situation. So I'm hopeful that this is kind of a one-off, and we're not going to have districts in the future that are taking this long. But I also want to just tell council that with the current system of how we process applications for desert, for districts, I would think two to three years is going to be kind of a standard, uh, especially for larger districts erring toward the, the longer time period. Um, in terms of numbers, you can see on the second column, uh, the number of properties. So we're looking at 217 in South Cumberland Heights, 112 in Casa Verdugo, and 306 in Bellhurst, leading to a total of 635, uh, new properties that would be brought into our historic district system. And then I added a total at the bottom that if all three were to be designated, we'd have a little over 1,500 properties covered in districts, and there would be at least 1,128 contributors. We don't know how many contributors because we don't have the number for Bellhurst yet. So that number is just based on 60% minimum threshold. So it would likely be a little higher, that somewhat higher than that. So that's all I have, uh, to discuss on the pending districts. And I want to emphasize, I'm sure you're going to be getting some calls. We've already heard from the community about the timing. I'm not making any excuses for myself or my team. I know in the future, we're going to make every effort to make it better. Um, but we are where we are right now, and we're going to do our best to get the two districts designated, if council approves it, by the end of the year.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Devine, Ms. Devine.
I, I would like to, um, to cover this section of the item before we move on to the next one, if that's okay?
Yes.
With you, I have some questions.
No problem, Ms. Devine, go ahead.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Platt, um, I noticed on the chart on page three of the staff report, uh, where you list all of our historic districts. And up until North Cumberland in 2012, and including North Cumberland Heights, and it had 175 houses, Rossmoyn had 504 houses. All of those were done in two years. What happened between 2012 and 2010, when it took Brockmont four years? Now, Neodora took, uh, three years, and now we're almost, we're four years on these other two. What changed between 2012 and, and the following, uh, years?
I said I wasn't going to make any excuses. I, I do have one small kind of global excuse in that in the early years of our districts, those were also the years of the Great Recession. There wasn't as much going on, uh, construction. There wasn't as much other work. Um, on my plate, we also had more assistance from interns and other staff members who were able to assist. I think there's just a general level of workload that's making it a little harder to move forward. Um, I forgot to mention, you had asked me, uh, about the timeframe for the surveys themselves. Um, I couldn't get that number because some of that's on paper in my office, and I didn't have access to it. I did some of the recent ones. Surveys themselves can take seven, eight, 10, 11 months. That's, that is a chunk of time. Uh, we give the community six months to bring us back signatures on the petitions. At least a couple of neighborhoods have needed that much time. Some do it much faster than that, especially the small districts. So I, I, I think it's a workload staffing issue. I, I think part of it was those early districts. We just didn't have the level of work coming in. And then obviously, with every district that we designate, that increases the amount of work focused on historic issues because we're bringing new properties online. So I, I can't, I can't say that there, I, I don't know that I could explain those changes in any other way.
Um, can, since you.
Rockwell Park is a special case. There were certain, certain things happened with the Rockwell Park, uh, situation that I don't, don't think I need to share publicly. But, uh, but, uh, but it did take a little longer on that one than we were expecting, certainly.
Okay, well, um, you know, uh, the other question, you, you mentioned the survey. Let me ask you about the South Glendale Historic Resources Survey. Has that been submitted to the state yet?
We tried to submit it to the state, and they said they were so busy and understaffed, they asked us to, um, wait and submit it later. I checked in a while ago and didn't even get a response to my email. Um, so it, we're planning to, the former city manager, um, indicated that we, the city wanted to submit it to the state. So it's, it's a, it's a rather, it's a formality. It's not, you know, it's not an issue that's affecting us today. The findings of the survey are still valid, so.
Okay, well, and, and I understand that the Bell, what is it, Bellhurst?
Mm-hmm.
Langished for two years before even going, uh, you know, before even going to the Historic Preservation Commission. Um, was there any reason for that?
Well, the reason was that we were working on two other historic districts. We were working on the South Glendale survey, which took up an immense amount of staff time, as well as the South Glendale community plan. So the survey was just part of the community plan. So at, from the beginning, and I, and again, I understand why everyone's frustrated, and I don't, I, I don't want to make excuses. We are where we are. But, but I do think from the beginning, I did tell them that we were not going to be able to move their applications forward as quickly as we'd like because of these other commitments. Um, we also combined the two districts. The Bellhurst area came in as two separate applications, and the applicants have been great. The proponents are really nice people. We worked together to merge them into one application just to get the efficiencies of scale and, and get the timing together. Um, that didn't really cause a huge delay, but there was a somewhat of a delay because they had to resubmit an application, rejigger it as one rather than two.
So, so you mentioned that, um, uh, the Casa Verdugo and the, um, South. Pardon? Verdugo, what did I?
I'm sorry, I was just filling in, South Cumberland and Casa Verdugo.
Yes, yes, those could be coming this year. Can we put a date certain on those, like February and March? Like they would come to, um, uh, let's say, HPC in March, uh, and maybe come to, uh, city council at the end of March, 1st of April? You know, we have, the state has some, uh, uh, laws coming down, changes being made. I think it's, uh, it's, uh, important for us to get on these right away.
Yeah, unfortunately, we can't do that because we need to enter the petition phase. Um, the proponents themselves will circulate petitions throughout the neighborhood. Normally, that's done door to door. Um, the people in Bellhurst who are currently in their first petition phase, the other two districts will be in their second petition phase. Um, the people in Bellhurst have got together a great, uh, methodology for doing online signatures and, and petition circulation. Um, we've worked with our legal team to make sure that we're getting signatures that are legally valid. Um, so the ordinance requires that we have the second petition, so there's no way around that. The proponents are given six months to turn that petition in. And if they can't get all the signatures they need, they're given another three months, which I don't expect that they would need. Um, so if, that timeframe really depends on how quickly we get the signatures in. Now, if we're doing it electronically, maybe it's going to be easier, but we've never done it that way. So there's a chance that we'll speed the process up. As soon as we get the signatures, I schedule HPC, planning, and then city council in quick order. That, that phase usually takes about two months, two and a half months to work out with your schedules. So that's why I'm saying by the end of the year is realistic.
So that leads me to another question about the process.
Mm-hmm.
The process is 11 steps. Left three planning department meetings, three HPC meetings, two public hearings, two petitions, and then finally approval by council. That, that process is 13 years old. Do you suppose that's something the council should look at? You know, Pasadena, as I understand it, they have a one-year process. Santa Monica has one year. Uh, most have two years, tops.
Yeah, and I, I can tell you that I, I wasn't here at the very beginning of the development of the district program, but talking to people who were here when I first started in 2007, I know that the council at that point was very concerned. Historic districts were a new idea, they were somewhat controversial. And I think people were frankly worried about what it meant, and that's why we have all the steps, and they wanted to get buy-in, as I mentioned so many times, petitions and all of this. I personally do think that it could be streamlined. I personally do think that it could be streamlined. I can't make that happen unless council, you know, requests that we do that. But that's something we could definitely bring a report to in the future to talk about.
Well, I have, well, I would like to suggest that. And also, I would like for you to tell council what, what you will need to help you in expediting these pending historic districts. What do you need?
We are, we are working on the, the next step in the two districts that are South Cumberland and Casa Verdugo is having an electronic community meeting. That's also the next step for, for Bellhurst. A colleague and I have been discussing this. I've been working with our, I've mentioned it to IAS, but we need to work with them more closely. And what we're going to do is model this on some community meetings that Public Works has held in the last few months. This is all new to us, so you, I apologize, but we do have to figure out how to make these things work. So I don't, I honestly can't say that council can help us at this point with anything except give a kick and say, do it. We are, and I want you to know, I personally want this to happen. I'm not sitting back saying like, oh, la di da, whatever. We do want this to move forward. We just have a lot of priorities. For example, I've also been directed to, we have to put out the announcements to the property owners for all of the South Glendale historic survey property. That itself has been a major process, taken up time and been given a high priority. All of these things we're working on and I, I can do my best, so I can promise you that I will do my best to keep this moving as well as we can. Not that we haven't been doing that before, but I know the time, obviously, has been taking longer. Things have been weird for the last year, but we're still working, obviously. We're not using that as any excuse. So if, I don't know if that's a satisfactory answer, but I hope that's, that's really what we can do best, so.
I will end, I will end my comments with this. Consider this a kick for me. I have been very frustrated with this process, with the time that it's taken. You know it, staff knows it. I, you know, I tried to get this, a year and a half ago, I tried to move this along and nothing happened. So I hope that we finally reach the point where, look, let's get this done. The, I think the homeowners want it. I think it's important for the city and I, I'm going to take you at your word, Jay. And I also would like to suggest that we look at that process and I hope that one of my other colleagues will, will second that. And again, if there's anything that we can do to expedite this or so that you can accomplish your job, let us know.
We all appreciate that. Thank you. I won't ask you where you're kicking me. I'll just take it as a kick, so.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Batman.
Yeah, Councilmember Devine asked a lot of the questions I was going to ask. So let me just say, you know, I, I'm hearing the same frustration that she's hearing and that you're hearing, Jay, and I, I want to lend my foot to that kick. And I do second us looking at that process. I mean, we do want buy-in. We do want to make a vigorous process. We want to do good vetting, but 11 steps seems like a lot. And it sounds like with some of these, it's, it takes too long. The other thing I would say though is, and I haven't been, you know, watching this for as long as, as my colleagues, but I understand that as of 2012 or so, you were full-time in historic preservation and now you, you've been promoted, which is great, but you've taken on a lot of other responsibilities. And I think we need to recognize that there is a resource issue here and, you know, continuing to beat you over the head is not, is not the way to go. So I think in addition to streamlining, we need to be looking as we get into the next budget cycle as to how we staff some of the things that are needed in the historic preservation space so that you are not carrying all this and feeling frustrated and feeling guilty that you're not able to do what you obviously want to do. So that's, that's all I would add to what Councilmember Devine said.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr., yes, Khati.
Yeah, echoing some of those comments and I appreciate my colleagues raising them. I want to also add, I'm not going to kick anyone anywhere, but I will say that I'll take the Jerry Maguire approach, help us help you. And as the council, you mentioned a couple of things about the ordinance. Mr. Platt, and I want us to be able to let you know that if there are areas, you are the expert, you're there day in and day out. If there's things that we need to change about the process to make it more streamlined, to truncate some of the, the process, so some of the steps, the redundancies are removed, let us know. We, I myself am prepared to do it. I've heard a couple of my colleagues to say they're also prepared to do it. And you're absolutely right. There was a time when the historical preservation movement began in Glendale in earnest. It was somewhat controversial. Some people in our community saw it as a reaction to new members of our community coming in and to the development that was being done. And fortunately, I think we've now hit, come to a place where it is not controversial. I think it's necessary because one of the things that has changed significantly in our state is the housing crisis and the need for more housing and the overarching and overreaching rules and laws that are being passed from Sacramento to build more housing, which are threatening our neighborhoods, the character of our neighborhoods, which we want to see preserved. So we need to do all we can to expedite the process by which we can preserve our neighborhoods so they're not decimated and gone and not just historic in nature, but historic in their existence in the rearview mirror. So if you need staffing, Mr. Lanzaphame, Mr. Platt, let us know. Let us know so we can allocate resources in terms of if we need to bring in an additional, I know that we have one consultant or we put out an RFP for individual, for a firm to come in and do these surveys. If we need to expand that to say it's not just one firm, but we have two firms and so if one's busy with something else, then we can reach out to another firm to come and pick up the ball and run with it, then let us know. Ultimately, we need to look for ways of being creative, being innovative to get the job done.
I just wanted to add and I appreciate what you're saying. If we pre-qualified firms, that could help us move more quickly through the contracting phase with consultants that we do need to bring in. So that would be something we also talk about if council allows us to come back with a process change report at some point.
I certainly would support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Platt, do you want to continue?
Thank you.
Mr. Najarian?
Mr. Najarian?
Councilmember Najarian, we can't hear you.
Councilmember, we can't hear you.
You're on Neodora.
You are, we can't hear you. He's on.
How about now?
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, well, thank you for bringing this forward, Mr. Platt. I guess furloughs are out of the question now? I mean, we were, good thing we didn't have discussion a few months ago because we were going to furlough your department, Jay. I guess we're done with that.
Dodge that bullet.
Folks, let me, let me make a few points here. I was, I was on council when we first initiated the historic neighborhood program. And we made a promise to the community, to the residents in those communities, that this would be a deliberative, thoughtful process where we wouldn't be jumping over and we wouldn't be, in a matter of a few months, creating historic districts. We promised residents, and not everyone in a historic district wants to be in a historic district. I mean, let's, let's all admit that there are people in there that aren't excited about the constraints that are placed upon their private property, personal property. But we told them, we're going to have this number of steps. Now, I'm sorry that those steps are taking time. We have a constrained staff. We dump all sorts of issues on. I'm not in favor of short cutting and cutting corners on that process. We have to give those residents a chance in each one of those little green boxes or whatever those colors were, to make a comment and to, to state their, their desires and their opinions about being part of historic districts. I think we've done a lot of historic districts since we started this process. I'm in no way, you know, lifting my foot to give you a swift one. I'm going to say, you're doing a good job, Jay, and you're, you're working through these issues, especially when you have districts with a huge number of homes. I mean, the vast number, what was it? The, the South Cumberland has a huge number of homes in it. That takes time. We just can't, it's wrong to short the process and to cut corners and have the goal of this being, how fast can we make a district? I think, I think a firm methodology is important, the chance for people to speak. And then if it takes two years or three years, then so be it. Let that be the, the time in which it takes to create a, a historic district. Because otherwise, we're going to have problems. I think there's going to be a lot of people, although maybe a minority, maybe a minority, nevertheless, who's, who are being restricted on their rights to do as they wish with their property. I'm not saying that they should be changing their homes. I'm not saying that it's, that it should be out of their hands, but they should be heard, they should have a forum, they should have an opportunity in that process to participate, and we shouldn't be short cutting it at this point.
What we could do if council directs us to prepare a report is look at a range of several options. One, a shorter one, one modification of what we do currently that still has multiple, you know, many steps perhaps. And then what we would also do, just as any, a part of any report like that, is compare our system to other local jurisdictions, as Councilwoman Devine mentioned, and just, you know, just to get whatever insight we can and take good practices from other cities or find things that we want to avoid perhaps. So we would be open to that kind of report to capture the full range of council's interests.
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Yes, Mr. Lanzaphame.
We can look at the process and we can modify it or not to the council's desire. That's only one part of the puzzle. The other part is the, the staff that's dedicated, the staff resource that's dedicated to it. We've recognized this and just, we can outline this for you in more detail if you'd like, but we've done a couple of things. There's staff on the planning side that have historic preservation experience. And so we've, we've tried now to move that and have them work on both sides of the house, if you will. That comes at a cost, a design review, because now that person is not focused on that. We think we can balance that. As we recruit, we have another position or two planner positions. We will look for people that have that background. And then the third, which, again, in the theme of not making excuses, but the third idea was for Jay to work with some of the younger planners currently on staff and train them up in historic preservation so that we had a stable of people that could, that could come in and out and work on this stuff. So that even if our process stayed the same, we could move it along faster. We need to be together to do that training and COVID just hasn't allowed us to do that in 2020. So those are the types of things we're looking to do to balance staff, to address those needs when we have them, and then move them back somewhere else when we have need in another part of the house.
Let's.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Devine.
I, I just want to thank Mr. Lanzaphame for, and of course Jay as well, for at least giving us these suggestions as to how we can solve this problem. I think that's very helpful and I hope that, that you will move forward with those plans and council can move forward with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's continue, please.
Yeah, unfortunately, we're not, we're not at the end yet. Soon, let me get this shared with you.
Let me ask one question though, Mr. Mayor. Did we, did, did staff get our request for a review of the process?
You're asking if I heard that?
Man, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Devine, we've heard it. If that's part of the motion, we'll certainly accept that direction.
Oh, okay.
I think there's three of you that have indicated you'd like to look at that process. We heard from Mr. Najarian that he wants to make sure that we keep that promise at the beginning of making it authoritative.
Right, yes. Okay.
Okay, let's move on.
All right. We were just talking about the South Glendale Historic Resource Survey and that identified lots of individual properties that could be eligible for the Glendale Register or that still have some historic character left that we'll try to protect even if they're not eligible for the register. And that, that's the bulk of what we looked at in South Glendale. But part of a resource survey like that is to also see if there are any potential historic districts in the area. So the survey team did find seven potential historic districts. One of them we already knew about because it was an extension to the existing Cottage Grove District. So we knew there were some houses out there that just weren't part of the initial designation. And that was because the proponent for the district chose to focus on Cottage Grove Avenue as, as the street for the district. But there's some other properties on the adjacent street on Reynolds, I think, that could possibly be an extension. But the six other ones are newly identified and I won't go into detail on these, but I just wanted council to know that they exist. The issue with a potential historic district, not a pending district, like the ones that have already gone through the HPC process, is these just exist on paper right now and the city is not going to reach out to the owners in these properties and say, you're in a district, you know, what are you going to do? We are going to notify them, but we're not going to try to organize them to create districts. So until someone who lives in or owns property in one of these districts comes to us and says, I'm interested in creating a district, these, these will kind of sit in kind of a, I guess, kind of a limbo for, for some time. And it's possible that they will never be designated and we will treat, we still have to do design review as projects come up in these areas. We're not going to treat them as historic properties as contributors, but we are going to treat them as properties that have historic interest and we're going to try to protect their character as much as possible. And that's the way we'll be treating these seven potential historic districts. This is the only slide I have for this topic. And then I wanted to bring up the issue that was raised by council several years ago about providing Millsack contracts for contributing properties in historic districts. This goes back to 2016 and again, you're going to say, well, why are we talking about this now? Council did direct staff to, you know, create a program for giving Millsack contracts to contributing properties. Like I said, we had no interest. No one came to us. And to be honest, the, the way we were going to approach this is when someone starts showing interest, we're going to work on developing the program that council asked us to. In 2019, we received two inquiries. One was filled out on a nomination form as if it was for a Glendale Register property, which isn't how we're going to be pursuing these per council's direction. We haven't heard from anyone else since then, but because of those two and the fact that we need to move on this, we've created kind of more detail to the program that was presented to council in 2016. And this was brought to the Historic Preservation Commission last August for discussion. So I wanted to share with council the, the finer tuning that we've given to this project and what HPC's decision was on it. So just to remind you, I'm not going to hit every bullet point here, but the idea was that we would offer contracts to property owners that are contributing properties that are not eligible for the Glendale Register. We thought if a property is eligible for the register, it should apply for register because that's a higher status and, and a more important kind of level of designation than just being a contributor in a district. There was a valuation cap established by council. This was based on what some local cities do. We created a, a kind of a number of contracts that we were looking at with a total of six per year that we're going to try to guarantee. Four of those would be Glendale Register properties, two could be contributors. If we had less than four Glendale registers, we could add to contributors. And we also gave the caveat that if we have time, we're going to do more. We're not going to artificially limit this if time is available. But that was kind of a baseline that we established. But that was kind of a baseline that we established. And then council gave us direction to establish an annual application process, which is what other cities do where Glendale Register Mills Act properties, we look at just kind of on an ongoing basis throughout the year. These would be on a schedule so that we could gather applications and then review them and then bring them through the designation process. The idea was that we would review properties because I originally thought that we would have a ton of interest in this from the community because we're offering people the Mills Act, which is a great benefit to reduce their property taxes 50, sometimes 60 or even more percent from what their normal tax valuation would be. And we didn't get the interest, and I think part of the problem with that was that it wasn't publicized. The city didn't publicize it. The Historical Society didn't publicize it, as far as I know, and they were the ones who brought this to council in the first place. So regardless, I I'm proposing in the new, this new program that we're going to work with the Public Information Officer and work with some of the local groups and homeowners groups to try to get the word out, to just get people who have properties that need work, that need structural work, for example, or that have their windows replaced, but they're still a contributor. Because you, a contributor doesn't have to be perfect. It doesn't have to have everything intact, the way Glendale Register property ideally does. So we wanted to create a merit-based application where we could provide some objective level of review so that we could rank what we believe are the best candidates from the worst candidates and then present that list to HPC and also to council ultimately. Not that it's a binding list in any way. HPC or council could pull properties from anywhere on the list if they were interested for whatever reason, but it does give us an opportunity to see which properties are most in need of the extra money that the Mills Act provides in order to bring them closer to their original historic appearance or upgrade their structure or maybe some other issues, systems like plumbing or electrical that could pose hazards, be dangerous in some way. And the idea is to keep these buildings alive for as long as possible and and make sure that the Mills Act money is going toward, at least in part, this kind of upgrade. So and then just as a reminder, if these properties do get the Mills Act in a historic district, we only look at what you see from the street in terms of our historic review. If it were a Mills Act property, we would treat it like a Glendale Register Mills Act property where we look at everything, including things you can't see from the street. So that was the direction we received. I won't go into detail on the timeline, but like I mentioned, we break the year up into periods during which we can accept applications, review applications, bring the applications to hearing, and then at the end of the year, as we always do, we prepare the Mills Act contracts and bring them to the council or to the city manager for approval. What we've done that different from the Glendale Register is we've created a more, frankly, it's a bit more difficult to get through this program because we have, as I showed you, we we could have 1,200, 1,300 contributors if all three districts now get designated. If we have 10 people coming in a year saying, I want my house to get Mills Act, we want to make sure that we understand what their issues are, what the needs of the property are, and then what kind of work are they proposing, and how do we evaluate that? So we ask, we're going to be asking for several things, including photographs of the entire property with a photo key, just so we know where they're taken from, and that will help us with ongoing inspections. We're required to inspect every five years for Mills Act properties, and this will help take that off of staff and put it on to the property owners to submit photos on a five-year cycle. We also are asking with the application for building inspection report, or my report, that gives us upfront information about whether there are any hidden issues. We wouldn't tell if I just went on a site visit and looked at a house. I have no idea if it's ready to crumble. I have no idea if the foundation's in bad shape. These reports would help us work with the applicant to create a work plan that covers the important issues that their property might have. So that would be required with the application. And then our Historic Preservation Commission, when reviewing this, I originally proposed that we do that again on a five-year cycle to keep it in line with the photos. They thought that was too often, so they recommended that we go with a 10-year cycle for these inspections, just to keep an ongoing record of what's happening with the properties. Years ago, the commission, we just were kind of brainstorming, how could we improve our Mills Act program with Glendale Register property? We thought this would be one way. So if council ever in the future, hopefully not right now because, you know, we have other things to work on, but just planting the seed that some of these ideas could be useful for all of our Mills Act properties. Ultimately, the owners, when they submit their application, give us a detailed work plan, line by line, of all the things they want to do. If the work was done before the application, it doesn't count. We want to make sure that the money that they're saving through the Mills Act is actually going to the work that we know is going to kind of enhance the property and make it structurally sound. We also don't want to reward people with Mills Act contracts if work they're proposing is typical to all property owners. So what I mean by that is, you know, everybody has to paint their house every, whatever, 10 years, eight years, 15 years, but it's a common thing that, whether you're a historic house or not, whether you're a contributor with the Mills Act or a contributor without the Mills Act, you have to do that, same with roof repair and things like that. So we really want this to focus on work, like I said, that is either restoring things back to their original condition, making the house look more historic, or dealing with kind of structural or hidden things that make the house safer and more long-lived. And then the last thing I wanted to show you, and I'm not, again, going to go over all the details here, is that in order to create the subjective analysis, we want to establish a point-based system based on the work plan. This is similar to what Pasadena and other cities do, and I'm working now on creating the system very close to what Pasadena has. And then I added something called the expense to tax reduction ratio, sorry, ratio typo there. What this does is if a property needs a lot of work and it's going to cost a lot of money, there's, I think there's a better benefit to the city and to the historic district than a property that may have, you know, a few small projects that aren't going to cost as much. So this is a way to objectively balance, balance this out based on the valuation of the property and the expenditures that the owner is supposed to put into the work plan. So they're going to tell us what their budget, what they think it's going to cost. We're going to run that by building and safety to make sure the numbers are realistic. And then we're going to kind of establish this point system and establish final points and bring that to the Preservation Commission and then to council for a final determination. So I know that was a lot. If you have any questions or comments, I I do want to take the opportunity because I received, as I'm sure you do, the Glendale Historical Society newsletter. And I, the Historic Preservation Commission ultimately did approve all of the, all of the program line items that I've just mentioned that are included in the slides. There, there was some discussion, and ultimately, there was some dissent from one commission member on a couple of the items that then now are discussed a little bit in this, in the newsletter from the Historical Society. And I just wanted to make it clear to the public and and to council that this point system isn't created to be onerous. And I know we're complaining about draft time and we don't have much to do, but I think the alternative is just giving the Mills Act to whoever's the first person who applies, which also doesn't seem fair. And we discussed that initially with council when we started this process. But there was a concern on the Historical Society's part that this process, this complicated process with the point system, which I don't think is as complicated as they they're worried about, would lead to a largely, they say largely remove commissioner discretion because the degree of work needed on a property, the degree of work, would take precedence over its architectural merits. And then parenthetically, they say not all contributors are created equals. I I have to, I'm, I'm only mentioning this because it's so incorrect. All contributors are equal. We can't have a system where we start saying, well, this house is prettier or older than this other house because every single contributing property is bound by the same rules, the same guidelines, based on the style of the property. They have to jump through the same hoops as anyone else in a historic district, and I think it would be highly unfair to start kind of a beauty contest among them in terms of ranking them. So if if that becomes a point of discussion with any constituents and anyone who contacts me, I'm going to make sure that that point is clearly made. Council, of course, can give us direction to go in that, in, in, with a more aesthetically pleasing decision-making process, but I I would not recommend that personally or professionally. So that's all I have on that, unless you have any questions.
I have one or two questions if I could.
Thank you, Mr. Bratman.
Yeah, so how many, Jay, how many of these cases do we have pending? Both categories, Glendale Register cases and contributor cases that are pending where there's an application for for a Mills Act?
Well, we don't have any contributors pending because we don't even have the application process done. And I know I said it would be January, and again, I, it's not done yet. Hopefully, it will be done in the next month. But we will be accepting applications through May 31st, according to the timeline that we've established and that HPC approved. So we have zero pending. I I mentioned that there was the one application that came in on, you know, incorrectly, I'd say. It's not, I don't count that as an application because we don't have a process in place to deal with that application. And then in terms of Glendale Register properties, I I don't have that number on the top of my head. We probably have four active applications that we'll be processing this year, at least to start. There may be a couple of others. There were, we had someone drop out recently who had an application in, which occasionally happens. So we, we have, you know, a handful of applications that we can start processing early this year.
Uh huh. Okay, it it strikes me as a very complex formula. I know you said you don't think it is. It strikes me as very complex for something that we don't even know how many we're going to have because we haven't had a whole bunch of of interest. But anyway, that, that being said, I I I kind of disagree. I mean, in terms of this question of how we choose between, you know, competing cases, if we have a limited pool that we can make available, a limited number that we can process, I I don't think they are all equal. I mean, I think if if we're having to pick and choose, it seems to me we should pick and choose not simply what's aesthetically pleasing, but what's historically significant. And it can be a combination of factors. It can include consideration of the type of work that needs to go into a property. But, I mean, it's our money, and if we are having, you know, if we're having to ration that across multiple potential applications, I think we have a right to say that we want to prioritize ones that have more valuable, more value to the community. And I, and I think that the discretionary element within HPC makes sense. So I I I think I don't agree with the position on that aspect of it.
If I can address that. I'm sorry, Mr. Bratman. Couple of things, remember, and if the council would like to change the policy, we would certainly do that, but we're looking at two contributors a year in in addition to four of the Mills Act actual Glendale Register properties. I think the point Mr. Mr. Platt was making earlier is as a contributor, they don't rise to that level of historicness, so to speak. And and they are, they are contributors, so they are important, and we treat them as important. But they're all the same as a contributor. They hold equal value as a contributor. What we're trying to do is figure out which of those need it the most so that we can make sure that we have a good stock of contributors going forward. Again, we can change, if the council directs us, we can change that number and make it more than two. We wanted to focus on the Glendale Register properties first. And and so our, our work plan for the year anticipates six, two being contributors, where we would implement that formula. So those are the reasons for, the reasons for our recommendations.
Yeah, and neither the Preservation Commission nor council would be bound by these staff recommendations, but staff, me personally, but I think our department does think that if the city is giving people a tax break, we should be doing that in the fairest possible way. And there's no information that comes to us in a historic district report that says one contributor is more valuable than another. If, as Fielder said, if there were historic importance to a building in a district, it was a contributor that looked like it should be on the Glendale Register, we're going to ask them to go through that process rather than through this process. That's the direction we got from council previously. So so I see we could, we could have both, both ways here. We could move forward with the process similar to what council directed and similar to what other cities do. But at the end of the day, you have the discretion, you have the choice. And if if the top of the list is a little house that you don't really think has much historic character and and somewhere else on the list is this big Spanish house that you think is really beautiful and you think it's important that that has, that would be council's decision.
Okay. Mayor, I do have two callers on the line.
Okay, we, we have callers.
You're not quite done.
Let's go to the callers.
Can I, can I just, hello? I just have one more slide. If you're, if there are no more questions there, I just didn't want to skip one of the issues.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Platt.
Very, very quick, but for the sake of being complete. The final thing is, we have a historic district brochure that's been in the works for a while, that's on the verge of being fully edited and ready to go. This is a mock-up of the cover. It's being debuted tonight. If Gloria in in North Cumberland Heights happens to be watching, she'll know that finally she can see something real, where we've been talking about this for a while, and she's very much anticipating this being ready. The goal of this brochure is to distribute to historic district property owners and residents to, just as a reminder, hey, you live in a district, and there's some really great benefits to being in the district, but there are also some design review issues and and things you need to be aware of. So it'll serve as a reminder to existing residents, and it'll also be an educational tool that can be distributed to community members, people moving into the neighborhood, people thinking about a new district. And we hope to distribute this to homeowners, associations, Realtor groups, Glendale Historical Society. So this will be brought to the Historic Preservation Commission for review. It won't be coming to council. I don't think it needs to be reviewed at your level, but I just wanted you to know that this is coming as kind of an educational opportunity for a bunch of different uses. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, Mr..
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for getting into a lot of these issues, and thank you for acknowledging the areas where there have been shortcomings by staff and where we need to help bolster those. One of the things that I want to emphasize is, and and this is not about conflating the issue of historical preservation or staff's needs with conversations when, at the outset of this pandemic, when we were, want to know more about the impact of furloughs. But if work needs to be done, it needs to be done. And I think training up our staff is important for them to understand the approach or where we're coming from in terms of historical preservation. However, if we need to, we should look into hiring people on a contractual basis. They don't need to be full-time employees, but people to step in, pinch hit and help out just to staff up because it has been mentioned and acknowledged that you have more on your plate now, Jay. So, Mr. Platt, so we need to do that and help bring in people who can help lend a hand. So not just training up our people, which will take some time, but also bringing someone who's a preservationist expert, someone who has done it or understands it, who has availability to work part-time or near full-time and 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 help out to knock some of these things off the list. I I I do like the merit-based system. I do think that if something is a Mills Act contributor, then with the approach that you mentioned, that should be taken into consideration holistically, not just what's visible from the street. And one thing I want to add is that when, I thank you for that brochure, but in the report, I mentioned that the brochure will go to people in historical districts. And I think it's important that the brochure go out to everyone in Glendale, every address or every, you know, use a GWP addresses if we have to, and I'll tell you why. I think that it's important for people to understand and realize what we're trying to do with historical preservation, especially in the face of, as I've mentioned before, the laws that... the laws that are changing that will potentially override any local control we may have to preserve our resources. And someone may live in the neighborhood that is not a historical district today, but maybe sometime in the future, or it may even pique the interest of some people into seeking ways where they can designate themselves under guidelines to become one. So let's not just limit the brochure to those areas that are currently in the process or historic, but it should go out to everyone so people understand what our local heritage is, what our culture is, and what we're trying to preserve. Thank you.
I normally wouldn't address something like this, but I'm just a little concerned because the brochure is very specific about, hey, you live in a district or you own a property, you have certain responsibilities, this is what you need to get a permit for. It's very practically oriented. It doesn't talk about the beauty and the history of districts so much. I would worry that if we sent it out to everyone, there'd be a lot of people freaked out.
And understandable. So to modify what I would say, it would not be to send them the full brochure, but maybe a postcard saying, you know, Glendale's, more information about Glendale's historic districts. Perhaps it could be an insert in one of our, the next newsletter that goes out to residents. We have done that in the past. We could do it in the future. Or it can be something of an insert, just telling, pointing people, directing them to website to learn more about the historical resources we have in Glendale, as well as efforts to historically preserve our resources and assets. So it doesn't have to be the specific, very, as you mentioned, very specific specified brochure.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Platt. Do you have a date certain for when that brochure is going to the Preservation Commission?
Well, my date certans are always very optimistic and genuine, but they don't always get met. I am very, very hopeful that when we have our February HPC meeting, that I will have the brochure, a mock-up, ready for them to review. I don't know if they're going to need more time, or if they'll be able to do it at the first hearing. As soon as they give it their blessing, we'll work with graphics to start copying it. I've already set up, I already have the process established with the mailing people from graphics in terms of how we're going to get this out. So it should be very soon. February is my dream, my goal.
I hope that dream comes true.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Najay.
So I want to make sure, Jay, that that brochure is, you know, that it's not slanted one way or the other, that it's just the straight facts on that, on what it means to be in a historic district, duties, obligations, and benefits. And how many languages are we putting it into?
Well, that's an interesting question.
It is interesting.
Yeah, and I think we should publish it in multiple languages.
Armenian, Korean, Spanish, Tagalog. So.
Yeah, I think.
For our city publications, I think we have different versions. So make sure you have someone working on the translation.
I know there are, you know, digital translation services, and then we have people read it to make sure it sounds real. With your permission, if we could move the English one forward, get it approved by HPC and get that distributed first, would that be your objection? Or would you rather, because we won't know who to mail the different languages to, and I guess we could mail everyone for brochures.
I'm going to refer to our former city clerk who was very good at putting information in different languages. How did we do it before already? I mean, that stuff was.
On things that are very volumous, some things we did in all languages in one brochure, and it just, for the sake of cost savings, you just have a less high-quality material. It wouldn't be on glossy paper. I mean, what I'm thinking of, Councilmember Najarian, is our sample ballots, for instance. So it would just be basic text. But if this has images, and it's going to be a little higher quality than, one of the more acceptable ways, and this has been done for elections, is you send it out in English, but you clearly mark where people can go for additional information, or have a shorter statement along with pointing to people to where they can get more information in the various languages.
I'm okay with that. I mean, I'm okay with that type of publication.
That we could do in this first round. We could revise it to have that language and print it in there, so.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bratman?
Yeah. So, I mean, the brochure, I think, is, obviously, it's very neat. And one of the things that I hear a lot, and I'm sure you do too, and we all do, is the amount of unpermitted work that has been taking place in the historic districts with contributors. I mean, I just, you know, because of this hearing happening, or this topic happening today, I've been given, you know, a list of addresses, which I can share with you afterwards. Some of them I'm familiar with myself because they're near where I live. For example, 1910 Neo Dorado, where the stone curb that actually is the character-defining feature of the historic district and its city property was ripped out years ago by the owner. And there's been complaint about it, and nothing has happened. And there are many, many cases I know of, of, you know, significant work being done after the historic districts were established. And there doesn't seem to be any process for requiring those homeowners to bring those properties back to their original condition. And it's a huge concern. And I think the brochure will help so that people know what they can and can't do. That's part of it. And I think that there's certainly some people that just don't care, and we need to have a better system for responding and enforcing our policies. And if I could just add to that, one thing I've also heard is that we, you know, most of this is unpermitted, but that in some cases, we are permitting work that violates our recently adopted historic preservation ordinance. The example, I think this is right, I hope I'm giving the right example, but 345 West Kenneth, where windows were replaced that were not necessarily irreparable. And I am told that in our historic preservation ordinance, we said, you know, you don't change things unless it absolutely has to be changed. And yet it seems that we are, at least in this case and maybe in others, approving alterations that are not absolutely necessary. So I really, and I'm hearing this all the time, and I think we need to do a better job of responding to some of these issues, particularly the unpermitted work. And you know some of the addresses? I mean, we've communicated about 1240, 1254 Ethel, and there's one on Moncato, and there's 1630 Wabasso, which, and then there are many others in, I guess, in what area is this? Bell, is it Bellhurst? No, it's not Bellhurst. Anyway, Brockmont, maybe? I'm not quite sure. But I have many addresses that have been given to me. So that's all I'm going to say on that. I'll pass them on, but I really feel like we need to be more responsive on these things.
Many of the properties you just mentioned do have citations from Neighborhood Services. We're aware of them. We work with property owners to correct violations all the time. The issue of ongoing illegal work is not something that's specific to historic neighborhoods. It happens all over the place. I'm hopeful the brochure will help a little bit, but I'm also realistic enough to know that people are still going to do things even if they've received a brochure in the mail. Enforcement is the key, and we have to work with Neighborhood Services, but I know we are all working on this issue. The other issue that you mentioned about those windows is an interesting issue based on where that's coming from. We have had a policy of allowing people to make window replacements since the earliest days of the Historic District Program, and we haven't received a ton of complaints. Now, there is a specific issue with that house that you mentioned that's different and went beyond what we approved, but the approval that we gave was no different than approvals we've given in many other cases. We are getting a lot more full-house window replacement requests, and it's a philosophical issue within historic districts that we would need guidance from council ultimately if we were going to change the policy, because our historic district guidelines do have one sentence that says, you know, we want to repair things instead of replace them. We have to balance that with homeowners who come to us and say, I want to put new windows in with thermal glass, the double glass, so it's more energy efficient. In preservation, that's a huge issue nationwide, the philosophy of what's the right thing to do in that case. And I see both sides of that issue. I'm a preservationist at heart, I get it, but I also understand someone who wants their house to feel a little cooler when they're sitting on the couch in front of the big window. So in the past, we have had a process. If council wants us to be more rigorous in terms of how we look at these applications, we would need to hear that from council, because we've been proceeding in the way that we've proceeded for years, based on the direction that we've received and based on the guidelines to the extent that the guidelines do allow replacement windows in districts. The guidelines even allow vinyl windows on side facades in districts. The guidelines were written in a somewhat conservative way, because I think they go back also to when Glendale was just peeling out historic districts. If council wanted them to be a little more stringent, we would have to hear that. And we would also need to hear that council would want more properties to be going to the Historic Preservation Commission for that kind of work, because we've had trouble thinking if someone wants to replace four windows, having to send them to council or to HPC with a $5,000 fee, when we can get new windows that are going to meet a historic district standard for keeping the look of the district alive. They may be fiberglass instead of wood windows, but they're still matching very, as closely as possible to profiles, the dimensions of the windows that were there. And we also have to remember that properties in historic districts are not individually historically important. We're looking at the district, we're looking at the texture of the neighborhood, and, you know, part of our job in planning, not just in districts, but everywhere, is this balancing act between homeowner needs, community needs, and the rules and regulations and guidelines that we work with. So far, we've been doing that in our districts without, you know, tremendous complaints. We've had houses that went through a similar process to the one you mentioned. Neighbors didn't come out of the woodwork and complain about it. So over the years, we thought we're doing well. If there's a disagreement and council wants us to approach it differently, please work with your colleagues to let us know. But I think there will be some ramifications there that could affect homeowners and also people's future interest in historic districts.
Yeah, well, on that, I mean, at this point, we should do what we've stated in the ordinance, whatever that is. I thought we did have a statement that said, unless, you know, irreparable, they should not be replaced. So, but your example is a good one on, you know, double-pane windows, and I don't think we want to prevent that. And that goes to my, you know, you're the historic preservationist. I always kind of come back to environmental issues, so I certainly want us to have better insulation in our homes. So maybe we find, you know, the right place for that. But in the meantime, we should stick with what the ordinance says unless we change it. And on things like the unpermitted work, I mean, I know this is a larger issue, but what do we do? This, you know, stone curb that I mentioned, I mean, this has been years, and I don't understand, what's our enforcement mechanism to require people? They've taken city property and basically destroyed it. We can't do anything except ask them nicely? I don't understand.
Ultimately, we can bring them to court. There have been some changes in our process that I'm not deeply familiar with, so I'm not going to address that right now because I can't. But it's between, you know, planning Neighborhood Services and the City Attorney's Office in terms of how we want to process these and move forward with them. I agree, there are some violations that have been on the books for a long time. When you work with the property owners, we do our best to try to get compliance. We can't, at this point, force anyone to do something, but the courts could, but that, you know, I'm not sure how many cases we bring that far at this point, so.
Well, maybe we can look at that separately from this, because I do think this is an issue that's of great concern to a lot of people and frustration, and people don't understand, you know, why do we have these rules? And then we just let people violate them and don't do anything about it.
Okay. May I have a motion for design?
Mayor, I do have three callers now.
Okay, let's go to the callers, please.
Actually, four callers at this point.
All right, let's go to the callers.
Andy Allison, you're live. Andy, go ahead.
Yes, good evening, council and mayor. I'm calling on behalf of the Glendale Historical Society, and we would like to reiterate our concern about the attention given to historic preservation by the city. We asked our members not to call in tonight to express their frustration, but I think some of that was passed along anyway. I was calling also to ask that council members take action tonight to jumpstart our historic preservation process, but I think with the robust discussion and the kick that was directed to Jay from, I call the council members, maybe that's kind of a start of what we're looking for. I do want to thank Jay and Phil and their staff for what they've done in terms of moving some of this forward and the items in this report. I do want to quickly go through a few items, and I'm going to try not to be repetitive because a lot of this has been discussed. Historic district update in the report and the timeline, as has been mentioned, this for Casa Perdigo in South Cumberland Heights, these are going into their fifth year in February. So it's our understanding that there's intended to be a public meeting for the pending historic districts in February, HPC review in March. We ask that council members instruct and help the planning department maintain this schedule and providing support to ensure the progress. The district in South Glendale, we applaud that recognition of the seven potential districts, and we are happy for that recognition and an underappreciated part of South Glendale. TGHs will work to support the establishment of these historic districts, so we thank you for that. In terms of the Mills Act contributors, as you said, it took more than four years to develop this application from the advice of the previous council that actually no longer exists. TGHs had objected to the new system when it was presented because we felt it was unwieldy and helped contributors to a higher standard than the Glendale Register properties. But at another point, we are going to be working to publicize this new program for contributors, and you may see an article on this in our upcoming newsletter. On the brochure, it's been years in the making, almost close to five years that it's been close to being finished. We're happy to see this draft and that it will, it's targeted for HPC review in February. Again, we ask council to ensure this schedule is maintained, and we've offered before, if DTHs is happy to provide with your comment as needed or desired. Additionally, a few other issues, Glendale Register nominations. As I think you're aware, only one property was nominated in 2020 at council's assistance, and we're grateful for that. It's currently a backlog, and many homeowners are frustrated with how long the process takes. Dan just mentioned about the difficulty in terms of violations for unpermitted work. I'm encouraged by some of the discussion with that, but we do want to get to a point where we can understand how the city can enforce its rules and going to court, that's , it seems to be extreme, but there must be a way to ensure that we can maintain these properties and ensure that unpermitted work doesn't continue. Related to these two points, there are currently around 125 Glendale Register properties and over 1,000 in historic districts, with that number set to increase substantially with some of the existing districts.
Mr. Allison, your time is up, at least.
We want to emphasize that the city really needs to hire an additional preservation planner to assist Jay, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
David Lynn Moses, you're live. David?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, council and council president. This is always, all the places I've lived, it's always been a contentious item. There's been, mention the word balance, and that's the key here. It just never seems to be enough balance between what the homeowners, the individual homeowners want, because in every instance, a so-called violation is by a homeowner that needs or wants a particular type of work done, and it may be an issue of. And it may be an issue of money that they want to get this type of work done. Or it could be just an issue of aesthetics or property value going up that they change the property. Illegal work is illegal work, and I can't really, I can't defend that. But, so I'll move on to another issue. Is, one of the council members mentioned the advent of this state, Sacramento dictating all these laws that are coming through. Some are just plain horrendous. But on the other end, I'd like the council to just take into account you cannot go all the way overboard on the other end and say, we're going to preserve our community, our heritage and culture by designating historical preservation. So I just want to put out those thoughts and keep the word balance out there on both sides. And lastly, very quickly, I want to commend, I've never called into the Glendale City Council before, but you really know how to run an efficient, balanced meeting. And it's refreshing from some of the things I've heard in some of the other cities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moses. Thank you, Mr. Moses. Next caller, please.
Victoria Valentine, you're live. Victoria, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Victoria.
Yeah, I just happened to turn on the city council, I forgot it was a Tuesday. I just have something to mention. The human interest has not died about how we live, how the humans live, the homes. It presents happiness, beauty, pride, joy, goodness. Homes are taken care of. Those owners, they are committed to take care of those homes. From outside of Glendale, tourists come from foreign countries. I live in a canyon and I see it. Architects come, sit and paint those buildings. They take pictures. It needs a little bit more protection, like a crosswalk should be put in to protect those people that stop and look and enjoy those homes. In 2018, an open house was held, I believe. The canyon came to life. Thousands were pouring across the up and down. It came to life. So there is a lot of interest. Now, LA Mayor, Mr. L, no, Mr. A, has designated Hollywood to go to pits. It became a homeless settlement town. I went there last weekend, I was very scared and I had to leave. No tourists will go to Hollywood anymore. They will come to Glendale. And Glendale is too refreshing. Well, some are not very interested, like my own sister, she doesn't care about those historic houses. She doesn't like their styles. But charting is not acting. That's computer work. We're not working for the computer. We're working for the house, for the owner, not for the charts and the computers. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. Valentine.
So wake up and get excited again.
Thank you, Ms. Valentine.
All right, bye.
Next caller, please.
Catherine Urka, you're live. Catherine, go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Agajanian, members of city council. I wasn't going to call in, but I did want to address the issue of replacement of windows on historic district contributors. I was for several years on the board of the Glendale Historical Society. And believe me, there have been tons of complaints about replacement of functional historic windows. And as I've delivered many of these complaints to staff personally, I strongly disagree with the assertion that the guidelines allow staff to approve window changes. It says very clearly in the guidelines that windows should be repaired rather than replaced. If the applicant wants to, of course, if they don't work, that's a different matter. If the applicant wants to replace functioning historic windows, there's a process that is outlined in the guidelines, and it involves coming and making the case to the Historic Preservation Commission. Staff has decided that HPC has no role at all and has just routinely allowed these changes over the counter for ripping out perfectly good functional historic windows. The point that staff glossed over tonight is that council, in fact, has changed the ordinance. They did it in June 2020. They added the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation to the ordinance. And I just want to read, "For contributors, all decisions by the Director of Community Development regarding proposed work that is visible from the street shall conform to the Historic District Guidelines and the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation." And this from the Secretary of the Interior Standards. "Deteriorated historic features will be repaired rather than replaced. Where the severity of deterioration requires replacement of a distinctive feature, the new feature shall match the old in design, color, texture, and other visual qualities, and where possible, materials." This does not mean slapping up a fiberglass window that more or less looks from a distance like it might possibly be wood. I think that this is just a huge flaw in the way that historic districts have handled, but the ordinance has addressed this. And staff must respect the Secretary of the Interior Standards as protocol for making these determinations. If the windows work, they need to be repaired. There's nothing energy efficient about ripping out perfectly good windows and replacing them with new ones. And that is just a question of the environmental costs of the materials. But also, people need to block up their fireplaces. They need to eliminate cracks under the doors. They need to add insulation to the sides of their house and the roofs. California houses were not built with cold weather in mind. And the windows do very little to increase the energy efficiency. I'm not worried that people are not going to be interested in historic districts because the way the state is crafting its recent versions of new laws changing single-family zoning is that they are planning to exempt locally designated historic districts from the kind of draconian policies that they've been inflicting on this. Pending districts will not be exempt, which is why the four-year, five-year timeline is a problem. But designated districts will be. And the more freedom they have from state legislation, the more popular they're going to be. Thank you very much. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you. What's, I want to know, what's the temperature in here? It's so cold in here. Can we turn off the air conditioning? I don't know what's going to happen to me tomorrow, I'm telling you. This is so cold in here, I can't touch anything.
I think we did turn off the air, so.
Did you? Did we turn off?
Yeah.
Why is it so cold? This is unbelievable. I mean, they are walking around, I can't. So, you know, do we have any other caller?
Mayor, that was the last caller.
Okay, I'm glad. Okay. May I have a motion for these items? Let's do it quick, and we have another item to.
Mr. Garcia, and mayor, may I make a motion on both items? On two items, one, a motion to revisit the historic district process related to designated and pending historic districts, and then, and implementation of the Mills Act program for contributing properties in designated historic districts.
I don't know, Mr. Garcia, where we are.
Sure, so council member Divine, the motion at H, sorry, at H2 is to direct staff, so it'd be basically part of the same motion, unless you want to break them up. One would be to direct staff to look at the revisions to the process and obviously bring that back for discussion by council. And then the other item, I'm sorry, was related to...
Was the implementation of the Mills Act program for contributors.
Okay, to provide direction to implement the recommendations in the staff report?
Yes, yes.
Okay, would you like to make that one motion, or?
Yes, I would.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll provide the second.
Roll call, please.
Council member Brotman?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. What's next, please?
Nine would be hearing, nine, eight, Community Development, regarding Nibley Park, 1103 East Mountain Street, nomination to the Glendale Register of Historic Resources. One, resolution to designate Nibley Park located at 1103 East Mountain Street as historic resource on the Glendale Register of Historic Resources, SGR 135. Two, motion to deny the request of the property owner to designate Nibley Park located at 1103 East Mountain Street as a historic resource on the Glendale Register Historic Resources.
Thank you. Mr. Golany?
It's, I'm sorry, it's a hearing, so if you want to open the hearing, Mr. Mayor?
Hearing?
Yes, please open the hearing.
Okay, I open the hearing then.
Okay. Mayor Agajanian, members of city council. This was, this report is in response to council member Divine's request to nominate Nibley Park to the Glendale Register of Historic Resources. And I'm going to turn it over to Jay Plattigan, our principal planner, for a presentation on this item.
Mr. Platt? Mr. Platt?
He's muted. We can't hear you, Jay.
Are you?
We can't hear you.
Are you on mute?
Yeah. Okay, is that better?
Yes, it's better. Yes, we can hear you now.
Just when I said I'd try to speed things up, I slowed it down. But anyway, council asks us to prepare a nomination for the city-owned park in Rossmoyn, Nibley Park. And it's been approved by HPC in terms of recommending that we council designate Nibley Park as a Glendale registered property. Nibley Park is located on the north side of Mountain Street, kind of right in the middle of the Rossmoyn neighborhood. Here's another one of these great old photos showing all the old orchards and the approximate location of the park. We have Don Jose Street visible on the right, and it was at Viscano, I guess, on the left. The park is donated to the city by the developer of the Rossmoyn neighborhood, by C.W. Nibley and his nephew, Alex Nibley. Alex Nibley was kind of the man on the ground here in Glendale. He ultimately lived in, built a beautiful house that still stands in Rossmoyn. And it's an interesting situation where the developer recognized that a public park benefits the community. And instead of selling the land, which was valuable, certainly, to sell off as housing lots, chose to make this a gift to the city. And so it was accepted by the city in 1925. I have a bunch of great old photos of it. This isn't one of them, but this shows an image from the LA Times about Glendale's increasing prosperity. And among the things they chose to show is a picture of Nibley Park. But here we have some really good quality, early photos of the park. And you can see that it was pretty much an open space. It had a lot of trees, a lot of oaks and sycamores. And then you can see along Mountain, this row of palm trees, which is very much like the row of palm trees that lined Royal Boulevard, which was developed by the same developer in a later phase of the Rossmoyn development. So palm trees are still with us today. Here we see them as babies. And you can see in the background that very few houses had actually been built. Houses that started being built, this is looking toward the intersection at Viscano. The house you see there under construction with the stairway and the arch is still standing today. The house to the right of that is gone with the replacement. The park itself has changed over the years. This is what it looked like originally, with lots and lots of trees and just open space between the trees. Here's another image, probably a little bit later. It looks around the same time, a little more manicured looking. And then we can see this picture from the later 30s, and we see it morphing closer into the park that we have today. Here, we see those palm trees have all grown up, so we have nice adult palm trees lining the street mixed in with a mixture of the old oaks and sycamores, and then a variety of other tree species that were added, I assume by the Parks Department back in the day, to just flesh out the landscape there. The landscape is much more thinned than it was originally, and the designation will not change that. The basic way we look at it today is how we expect it to look in terms of open space, the recreational use and the trees. But the funny thing here for a Glendale registered resource is that there's not a lot that's actually historic that we're going to try to protect in this park. So it's important to remember that. This is a contributor in the historic district, so it's already protected through the historic district status. Putting it on the register is just a nice thing to symbolize that the city of Glendale is committed to its historic place and wants to put city-owned sites on the register. Here's a view to the interior of the park. You can see the playground equipment, picnic benches, lots of the old trees, and then a lot of newer trees and grassy areas. In terms of what's historic in the park, there's an old stone wall kind of at the back, kind of on the west side of the park, or I guess the north, probably. But the back edge of the park is the stonework. We don't actually know anything about it. It looks old. It's not in great condition. But we think it should be treated as a historic aspect of the park. So when it needs to be repaired, which looks like sooner than later, we try to keep the stonework intact and keep the proportions alive. There's some stonework over near the tennis court. And this also, we don't know when it was built, but it looks older than a lot of other things in the park. So we think it should be protected. And if someone, if the city ever wanted to remove it, we'd probably bring it to the Preservation Commission to review whatever the project was to make that decision. The tennis court itself is not considered historic. We don't know when it was put in. I think I've heard from somewhere in the 1960s, maybe. Here's how the tennis court looks today. And here's a great photo from the 70s with the Housewives of Rossmoyn taking tennis lessons with the resident Nibley Park tennis pro, or whatever was going on. But, you know, it's been an important part of the community, the whole park has. And I think that's really its most important feature, is that it was designed to be an amenity for the neighborhood, and it remains an amenity for the neighborhood. You can see this low wall, not a wall, the fence in front of the park that runs all the way along Mountain Street. That's not original. It looks like it was built, you can see it in this photo from 1977, so it at least was built in the 70s, could be even a little earlier. What we do know is that there was a low fence or more of a chain railing along the edge of the park all along. So we can look at that as not this being a historic feature, but the presence of a low barrier, which is making it safer for the kids in the park anyway. If this ever deteriorated and needed to be replaced, we would entertain the possibility of a new barrier as long as it didn't obstruct views into the park or change anything else. Things like changing picnic tables or playground equipment won't necessarily have to go to the Preservation Commission. It's all kind of staff-level stuff because these aren't historic features. They're just the way the park's developed over the years. If anything were an egregious monumental change or something that the department deemed significant, of course, we would bring that to the commission. Here's a restroom. This is actually the reason its designation is coming forward because of concern about changes to this building. Obviously, this is not historic, this is not protected. Changes could occur here that would have to review. And again, a lot of it would be staff-level, but some might have to go to the Preservation Commission, possibly. But I can't imagine what that would be. And then here's an intervention that was made recently to install handicap parking. That would be a goal for the park to have access to handicapped drivers coming in. And it shows that there's flexibility for this kind of change to destroy the overall character of the park. So things like this, you know, we'll be reviewing, working with parks going forward if you choose to designate. Actually, I shouldn't say that because we already would be doing that because it's a contributor in the district. So the designation won't really change that. And then just here's the final shot of the park. If you have any questions, I'm here. This one's pretty straightforward, I think.
Thank you.
I don't have any, I have one question.
Mr. Kusakian?
Would designating this historic require us to keep the name? If in the future, some, we decide to rename it, or some other council decides to rename it, would that be affected by our designation today?
Designations don't affect names. Buildings change names all the time that are still... Designations don't affect names. Buildings change names all the time that are historic buildings.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay. I have no questions.
Thank you very much. Ms. Divine, you are?
I have a comment. What a fascinating and interesting report this was, to see the park back in the day. It's a beautiful park. It's a well-used park. And a gift like this to our city was just absolutely amazing to read about. And I, I would absolutely approve the designation. And it's fantastic. I love it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any other comment, or somebody wants to move the item?
The only, the only other thing before, I will allow Councilmember Divine to move the item. But the one thing I do want to bring up is, first of all, it is a very widely-used park, very popular park. My kid loves it. A lot of families love it. Oftentimes, you know, pre-COVID, we'd have meetups there. Jay, as, as some of the trees die off, like the pine trees that may not have been original or native to the area, would designating it a historic park also include us restoring some of the more local trees and more, trees that are more natural and, and local to our region?
I, I think that would be a good goal. The, the trees that are there are, you know, kind of grandfathered into any designation. And, and to be honest, for example, the Chinese elms along the edge, at some point, the city planted those. They've become part of the story of the park. But I, I think we could encourage native plants. But I would, I would ultimately leave that to the Parks Department, unless council wants us to create kind of a guidance, a goal for that.
I have, I have some, I have, I have a personal agenda here I'll share with folks. Some of the pine trees, those pine cones are pretty big and heavy. And much like some of the pine trees we have on our Civic Plaza, they could pose a possible danger to someone. And, and I don't think the pine needles necessarily do much for the preservation of the green grass underneath. But whatever the case may be, thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion for this item?
Close the hearing, Mr. Mayor. Close the hearing.
Oh, I close the hearing. And may I have a motion for this item?
I'll move the item.
Is there a second?
I'll second. I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Okay, what's next, please?
Next item would be oral communications. I do have one caller on the line.
Okay, let's go to the caller, please.
Herbert, you're live. Herbert Molano, you're live.
Thank you very much. Mayor Agajanian, members of the City Council. My name is Herbert Molano. I want to start, first of all, to preface that this is not a comment on item 8D, but it is somewhat related. So I hope it doesn't conflict with your rules. But it is about a topic that I have been discussing and presented to the City Council now for some time. I would say years. Last December, the finance departments submitted to the City Council, the audited comprehensive financial reports. But throughout all these years that I have been participating in, in Glendale, you know, civic activities, I have yet to see a City Council review and evaluate what many would regard as the most essential report that the city staff will provide to the City Council every year. So why isn't it that the city does not discuss the CAFA? I have been a consultant to business for decades, and reviewing monthly financial reports is like a necessary thing. And reviewing annual financial reports is a big deal. But somehow, we don't get to see the evaluation of the CAFA. Actually, we don't see it until the budget comes around in April. And then you've got very few hours allocated to very significant high-ticket items for you to decide, especially departmental expenses, trends, and so forth. So I'm calling to suggest that the City Council start taking up maybe some of the trends that have been occurring for many of the departments in the city, and the increases in expenditures that have prompted a shortfall in revenues insufficient to meet the expenses. And I can say that because the City Council was persuaded to, you know, to push for a sales tax a couple of years ago. And it was persuaded last year to go after a transient occupancy tax, which is now costing me thousands of dollars more in expenses to me a year, or less income. So if the city finds itself in financial straits, it goes after additional taxation. And yet, the trends of the expenses of the city as shown in the CAFA are not discussed, at least not in sufficient lead time, so that when the budget comes around for your discussion, there's a proper context for that evaluation. And I keep on harping on this because I just, something that is so natural in, in private organizations, doesn't seem to occur at the city level to the extent of truly holding accountable departments to their increases in expenses. And it concerns me. Because if I don't speak, I know what will happen in the future. Additional increases in taxation, and no attention really being paid to holding off the increases in expenses that the city is incurring. So I am suggesting to the City Council, and I hope that my, that we can be given sufficient notifications so that we can take a look at these potential discussions that you will have. And it is my hope that you will be persuaded to review the CAFA in public and take up at least some of the major ticket items or departments that, that have grown significance in the last few years, so that you can get public input. And it's my hope that the, that the staff would actually do an outreach to those individuals who understand finances. They can participate and be involved in this very significant process of transparency and, and public involvement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Molano. Next, is there any other caller?
One more caller, Mayor.
Let's go to the caller.
Lice, is it?
Lisa.
Lisa Cauche Negrete?
Yes.
Did I pronounce that correctly?
Close enough.
Thanks.
So I will elongate this. First, I have to say that this is-
Can you, can you mention your name, please?
Lisa Cauche Negrete.
Thank you.
Sure. This is the first time I've observed a Glendale City Council meeting, and it was fascinating. And I might add it to my must-see TV list for Tuesday evening. So thank you very much for that. I am actually, I, I stayed for the whole meeting, related to a topic that came up earlier, regarding 3830 and the building that overbuilt itself that we're trying to resolve. So I just wanted to say, because I am a direct neighbor, that I wanted to thank Mr. Lonza Fame for clarification on the status. Because the neighbors have been left with the impression from the planner that associated with the project, that the deck, the overbuilt deck would seek DRB approval with the house, which was very concerning to us to have them coupled. So I want to thank Mr. Lonza Fame for clarifying that they expect to resolve the deck problems before the house goes before the DRB. And I think our main concern, and I've heard this somatically through the evening, that I think it's, it's a concern that SCOTF laws are rewarded, and they follow a kind of theme of build it and it will stay. And I understand sometimes the city is trying to make certain people happy, or more fair, or what seems like fair. But true fairness is consistent application of the codes and rules that the city states very clearly. And so I just hope that the, you know, the council can kind of keep that in mind as these conflicts arise. And our expectation is that the deck will be remediated, the overbuilt deck, and scaled back from 14 feet to the max of eight feet per the exemption agreement made by the homeowner with the city. And once the deck is in line, then we think it's appropriate to discuss our issues with the proposed home. So I want to thank you for listening to me and hearing my, my concern.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other caller?
Mayor, that was the last caller.
Okay, what's the next, please?
Adjournment.
Okay, before we adjourn, I have received from Armand Gorgorian's biography from the family, which I now I will read. Armand Gorgorian was born in Tehran, Iran on October 26, 1946, and attended the Don Bosco Catholic School. Athletics was his biggest love, and he was a star athlete in three different sports. After graduating high school, he attended the National University of Iran and received his Master of Arts in Architecture and City Planning. Immediately after high school, Armand joined Iran's Ararat Athletic Scouting and Cultural Organization, and stayed a member till 1978, when he moved to United States. In September of 1978, Armand and his family moved to the States and settled in Glendale. When Homentment Glendale Ararat Chapter was founded in December of 1978, Armand was one of the first to join, followed by his wife and children. Armand became Homentment Glendale Ararat Chapter's first executive director in 1996, where he began to establish his relationship with city agencies such as the Police and Fire Department during his time as executive director. Armand also cultivated valuable relationships with public agencies such as the city of Glendale, elected officials, sister organizations, and various, various community groups. Independent of his time as executive director, Armand's developed and commitment to Ararat spans over decades. For the past 45, 41 years, Armand had played an integral part in our chapters, meaning our chapters, growth and success. An avid basketball player himself, Armand coached several teams at Ararat, and in 1981 guided Homentment Western US Region's All-Star Basketball Team to the inaugural Pan-Homentment Games, which took place in Montreal, Canada. He served on board of Glendale's Armenian Red, American, I'm sorry, American Red Cross. He was a member of Pacific Edison Committee and chaired the Implementation Committee. Armand also was a member of Glendale Downtown Strategic Planning Committee and was the chairperson of the Transportation and Parking Subcommittee. From 1995 to 2003, Armand was appointed to the city of Glendale's Transportation and Parking Commission, served the commission for eight years. Armand served the Glendale Committee in multiple ways until his retirement in December 2019. Words cannot express how grateful the Homentment Glendale Ararat Chapter family is for Armand's years of dedication, his unrelenting work habits, and his unwavering love for Homentment and its Glendale Ararat Chapter. His passing on January 25, 2021 is a great loss to all of those who had the pleasure of knowing and working with him. He leaves behind his wife, Zarik, daughter Alina, and son-in-law Steve, his son Arteen, and daughter-in-law Sarah, and his three grand-grandkids, Emily, Evan, and Ella, as well as his sister Alice. May God bless his soul. And with that...
Motion to adjourn in memory-
May I have a motion to adjourn?
In memory of Armand Gorgorian, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. With that said, meeting is adjourned at 10:49 PM.
Good night.